I'd like to present a commendation. And say thank you, in behalf of the Los Angeles City Council. You can come right here. And then.
Oh, boy. I, um. Good morning.
Good morning.
And I thank you so very, very much. I'd like to say, uh, that I was so taken with being honored in this way, that I forgot to write a speech or anything to say. So I woke up at four o'clock this morning, two o'clock, went back to sleep and woke up at four o'clock, and began writing. So please, it's my heartfelt feeling, so please bear with me, because it's in my handwriting. And nobody can read my handwriting, including me. Councilwoman Bernard Parks, ladies and gentlemen of the city council of this proud city of Los Angeles, which is now my home, my many friends and relatives, whose presence here I cherish. Thank you. When I first learned of the honor you have bestowed on me this day, during Women's Month, I was speechless, which anyone who knows me can tell you that was a first in itself, as you can tell. There have been so many firsts in my life. First, I was born in a small community just outside of my hometown, Chicago. My father was the first mayor of Robbins, Illinois. I grew up in the musical theater as a ballerina, then modern and Afro-Cuban dance. I was trained in classical singing, but then I loved jazz and blues and show tunes, and so that stopped that career. As an actor, I studied and performed with the best. When Gene Roddenberry brought me back from Paris where I was performing, and cast me to create and portray Lieutenant Uhura in his legendary television series, Star Trek, it was the first interracial, along with George Takei, it became the first interracial ensembler cast of a show on network television. It changed the face of television forever. I had given up my, I had not given up my aspirations. I just thought a little TV role would be, look good on my resume, you know? So imagine my surprise when after the first season, and I went and told Gene Roddenberry I was leaving the show to go back into theater. Imagine how I felt that fate would have other plans for me. Because the next evening, I was a guest at, it was a Saturday night, I'll never forget, at an NAACP fundraiser. And I would meet Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was appalled. "You can't leave Star Trek," he said in his wonderfulness of tones. He demanded, "It is the only show, Coretta, my wife Coretta and I allow our little children to stay up late and watch." He wasn't joking. He was serious. And he said, "You have the first non-stereotypical role in a successful TV show, and you have created it, Nichelle, with dignity and strength. You're the chief communications officer on a starship in the 23rd century. Don't you see that image of what can be, of what will be, is what we are marching for, what we are willing to die for? You cannot leave." Well, I did not leave, and I never regretted it for a moment. His shot, his parting shot was, "Besides your fourth-in-command, where can you go?" It was at that point that I realized, realized that Star Trek had interrupted my career and would for the next forty years. I have never regretted one moment. I would learn a year later that there were two little girls, both nine years old, when Star Trek came on the air, who had seen that very first episode. One of them told Gene Roddenberry years later, when he asked her why she, a major motion picture star, wanted to be in Star Trek: The Next Generation, and she told him, "It's all Nichelle Nichols' fault." It seems she was that little girl, that little nine-year-old girl, and who saw me, saw Lieutenant Uhura, and said, "She ran through the house," she told Gene. "I ran through the house screaming, 'Come quick, come quick. There's a black lady on television, and she ain't no maid.'" Yes, she grew up to be Whoopi Goldberg. And yes, Gene wrote a special recurring starring role for her in Star Trek: The Next Generation. The other little nine-year-old girl used to look up to the stars and wish that she could fly among them up there. Then she said, "Star Trek came on, and I saw myself for the first time on television. I saw myself." And she vowed someday she would fly among the stars. When she saw on television ten years later and read that NASA had contracted Nichelle Nichols to recruit the first women and minority astronauts, she was in medical school. Four years later, Dr. Mae Jemison became the first woman of color to become a U.S. astronaut. Both of these distinguished women became dear friends of mine. My recruitment drive was successful, and not only in that first women and minorities did they find one woman and one minority. They found six women, four African-American men and one Asian man. We had come a long way, but not as far as we were going yet. NASA would bestow upon me for my successful efforts their very coveted Civil Service Award and Medal. And now amongst the turmoil and economic crisis, the first in almost eighty years when our country faces catastrophic proportions, we, this country, elected the first black president with the unlikely name of Barack Obama. Did I say these were my firsts? When I'd been told several times that President Barack Obama had declared that he was, yes, a fervent Star Trek fan, and not only that, he was an ardent fan of Lieutenant Uhura. Now that is a first. Councilman Bernard Parks, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, you do me great honor. I thank you from the bottom to the top of my heart. And now for a change you can believe in, I will say no more. I'm very honored to have so many of my friends here beside me, two of which are my baby sisters. Marian Michaels, a brilliant actress, Mrs. Diane Robinson, too smart to even be on this planet. We are the Nichols Girls. And I thank you, one and all my beautiful friends, all the faces that you, that you do recognize. And I won't even try to name them because they are amongst many, many wonderful people who would have been here if they could have. And I am so grateful that you all did and could turn out and be with me today. I thank you, council. I thank you. I thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. It's very fitting that we have just honored one woman who was a pioneer because it is our Pioneer Women's Week here in Los Angeles. And for that, I'd like to recognize the council member from the 3rd District, Dennis Zine, for some very special presentations to some other very special women here in the city of Los Angeles, the Pioneer Woman of the Year for the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Zine. While he's making his way, let's go ahead and call the roll, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weasel, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Vice Wesson, Sign, Garcetti. Twelve members, President, Aquorm, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Ms. Han seconds. Without objection, those are approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection. If we can run through the agenda while Mr. Zine is making his way.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue Item 2 to March 31st.
Okay, without objection. We'll continue Item 2 till the 31st of this month.
There's also been a request to continue Item 6 to April 14th.
Okay, without objection. We'll continue Item 6 till the 14th of next month.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 6, with the exception of 2 and 6 that were continued, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wish to call those special, 1 through 6? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Let's send number 4 forthwith, please. Next item is?
Items 7 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have cards from the public on some of these.
There are cards on a number of those, Mr. President.
I see 18, 19, 20, and 24. We'll open and close the public hearings on the rest. Specials, colleagues? Number 11 for Mr. Parks. Are there special items? Mr. Cardenas? Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Okay. And if there are no other specials, let's go ahead and close the public hearings and open the roll on the balance, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. If we can recess the regular meeting and call the roll for the special meeting?
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weasel, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Vice Wesson, Sign, Garcetti. Twelve members, President, Aquorm.
First item, please.
Item 27 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
All right, we have a card for the record on that, but if no member would like to reopen that, we will keep that closed. Anybody wishing to call it special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that forthwith, without objection. Next item?
Item 28 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, we'll consider that. Anybody wishing to call 28 special? Mr. Alacon, okay? And we will temporarily recess the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting. And Mr. Zine, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joining me is Kelly Hawkins, our executive director from the Commission on Status of Women. If the Pioneer Women will please join me. Pioneer Women, if you please join me up here. Mr. President, we had a reception breakfast up in the Bradley Tower this morning, and the honorees and their guests joined us for a breakfast, and we made acknowledgment in the Bradley Tower. Let me give you some information about the Pioneer Women Awards. March is recognized as National Women's History Month. In the spirit of this observance, the city council, city of Los Angeles, in conjunction with the Los Angeles City Commission on Status of Women recognizes fifteen women who have made outstanding contributions to the strength, vitality, and enrichment of Los Angeles during the annual Pioneer Women Awards event. Each council district, there are fifteen council districts, each council member nominates an individual for this prestigious Pioneer Women Award. Awardies are chosen by their respective districts, 1 through 15. It's an intergenerational award. And the commission encourages each district to consider awardees in the community from high school through retirement age. The event features the Pioneer Women Breakfast, and we all enjoyed that this morning. How was the breakfast, ladies? Very nice. Tasty, you didn't have to cook. It was all done, the district done for it, so. And it was very organic, yes, it was. So the, we recognize you, and each council member participates in this. The Pioneer Women's Award was created in 1988 to recognize the comprehensive woman in the city of Los Angeles. And Kelly is now going to read the winners. And if you'll please wave your hands, so we'll get you on camera, as the fifteen Pioneer Women are with us this morning. Kelly.
Council District 1, Mary Ann Hayashi. Council District 2, Alice DeBeau. Council District 3, Anne Kinsel. Council District 4, Nancy Oda. Council District 5, Janet Halbert. Council District 6, Irene Valderas. Council District 7, Sheila Berman. Council District 8, Lorna Ward. Council District 9, Adela Barajas. Council District 10, Anne Shaw. Council District 11, Cindy Hinch. Council District 12, Erica DeSmith. Council District 13, Hy-Pen M. Council District 14, Margarita Amador. And Council District 15, Daisy Ibarra.
And the spirit of Bill Rosted will also say it's great, 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 for all these wonderful Pioneer Women. Thank you all very much. Congratulations to our Pioneer Women. Thank you for the Commission on Status of Women for organizing this every year. And ladies, we wish you a wonderful day being honored here in the city council as Pioneer Women for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you to our great commission and to all of the Pioneer Women. I think it was a great suggestion Mr. Labange made. And next year, we will maybe come here at nine o'clock so we can televise the ceremony that we had upstairs. But it was an incredibly inspiring ceremony of powerful, amazing, inspiring women from around Los Angeles. So congratulations to all of you, and we thank you so much for being here at City Hall. Our next presentation is from Council District 14. Is Mr. Wezar ready? So I'd like to recognize from the 14th Council District, Councilmember Jose Wezar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If we could ask Hortensia Magaña's family to please come up? Thank you very much, colleagues in public. And I'm really honored to be here today to recognize the memory of a wonderful person in our community, Hortensia Magaña. Hortensia Magaña was born in Durango, Mexico, and was married to Samuel Magaña for over forty-four years. And together, they celebrated their lives and love with three grandchildren and seven grandchildren. The life of Hortensia Magaña has served as an example to the entire East Side community and to all of us about what is possible. She and her husband became the founder and vice president of Diana's Mexican Food Products, a company with five restaurants, three tortilla factories, a tamale factory, let me say that right, a tamale factory, and a bakery. Diana's Mexican Food Products has more than 300 Mexican employees for whom Hortensia always provided employee benefits above what was mandated by law. Hortensia's compassion and commitment to ensure the best working and living conditions for her employees was truly inspirational. Hortensia Magaña was a woman of many talents. She served as the executive director of Public Relations for el Comité Mexicano Civico Patriótico for twenty-two years, organizing some of the most important historic and cultural events here in Los Angeles. During her time with the committee, Hortensia organized the most important September celebrations, such as the East Los Angeles Parade, the Grito Dolores, also known as the Shout of Dolores, at the steps of City Hall here in Los Angeles. The Señoritas Fiesta Patrias Mexicanas, a wonderful beauty pageant, and the closing gala banquet celebrating the Mexican Fiesta Patrias. She also helped organize that as well. She truly embraced her civic duty wholeheartedly. As well as her contributions with the committee, Hortensia and Samuel Magaña, were one of four couples that made significant contributions for the construction of the statue that today immortalizes His Holiness Pope John Paul II, which stands on one of the main avenues in the capital city of Durango. In 1991, Hortensia and Samuel were received in special audience by Pope John Paul II during his visit to Durango to celebrate the statue on this special occasion. Hortensia Magaña was a role model to not only Latino immigrants, but to all of us. She served as the first woman president of the Comité Beneficiación Mexicana, and she made history and also carried out one of the most praiseworthy social works in the community, helping the Mexican council generate in Los Angeles with the repatriation of corpses. It is thanks to Hortensia Magaña that Boyle Heights is home to Casa del Mexicano, which serves as a cultural heritage house for many of us in the community. In 1990, she purchased land for a parking lot for Casa del Mexicano. And for many years, she organized the delivery of more than 500 Christmas baskets to families in the Boyle Heights community. She received numerous awards and recognitions for her work, and she has also received from Durango, Mexico's Woman of the Year Award in 2007. And on February 20th of this year, the governor of the state of Durango honored her memory and gave thanks for her many contributions. Sadly, last year Hortensia Magaña passed away. But we will forever be grateful for her strength, determination, and passion that have been passed on through her family. Her influence will continue through the foundation she has laid for el Comité Mexicano Civico Patriótico and Casa del Mexicano. It is great, with great love and respect, that I present this resolution to celebrate the life of Hortensia Magaña to her husband Samuel Magaña and also to her family who's with us today. Please help me give you a round of applause for recognizing the work of Hortensia Magaña. Thank you so much.
Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Magaña, y estoy aquí para recibir esta commendación por Hortensia de parte del señor Wezar.
One moment, one moment. We could attribute that.
My son is going to speak in English, so. Queremos agradecerles a todos, a todos los city councils aquí por este, esta commendación. Mi mujer trabajó mucho, y nosotros estamos agradeciendo todo lo que ella hizo y lo que ustedes nos están dando por lo tanto que ella trabajó. Muchas gracias. My son, Sam Magaña, is going to talk this in English. Thank you.
Good morning, good afternoon. On behalf of the Magaña family, it's an honor to receive this. Thank you, Councilman Wezar. Thank you, City Council. My mother was a fantastic mother, first of all. She was definitely a pioneer, so it's an honor to receive this today. And again, it warms our family very much to have received this today. Thank you. Thank you very much, colleagues. And on these Fridays, when we do recognize outstanding individuals, those are living and past. It's great to see that someone like Hortensia opened roads for many of us and also always gave back to the community. And that's something that we hope to exhibit on our young people who see and remember the life of Hortensia Magaña. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the family. Next, we'll recognize from our second council district, Councilmember Wendy Gruel. The recently arrested Wendy Gruel. After that will be Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is Mediation Day in the city of, not you Dana, sorry. I get another great presentation while all these kids are here, so we're going to do that soon. But I first get to do Mediation Day. Good morning. It is my pleasure to celebrate and acknowledge the importance of mediation services by declaring today, March 27th, Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles. This is the fifth annual that we were talking about, that we've been able to acknowledge the importance of mediation. By doing this, it is my hope that we, to increase awareness about the use of mediation as an alternative rather than legal action. Mediation saves more than just time and money. It can also save the stress of having to go to court. And mediation does this by providing a forum in which parties can resolve their conflicts. It voluntarily brings together disputing parties in an attempt to reach an agreeable solution to their dispute, thereby avoiding the necessity to seek a decision from a judge, an arbitrator, or a jury. And one of the greatest aspects of mediation and alternative dispute resolution is that, an effort to resolve conflicts amicably. Relations among people and within neighborhoods and families. And a lot of that can help it improve and be able to have the dialogue that is so critically important. And so the individual who came to me five years ago and said, "We have to do a Mediation Day in Los Angeles. We have to publicize the importance of mediation," was my good friend, Dan Bensvy, who has been the chairperson of Mediation Day, and asked him to say a few words. Dan Bensvy.
Thank you, Wendy Gruel, City Council, for honoring mediation, a profession which has come of age. Right now, as we speak, in hundreds of conference rooms around the city of Los Angeles, skilled mediators are guiding parties in dispute to agreement. By the end of today, most of those parties will have ended their dispute off mostly with a signed settlement agreement, often with handshakes. Could you imagine the enormous cost to the city of Los Angeles that is being saved if the city needed to pay for hundreds more judges and courtrooms to hear all these cases? Thank you very much for honoring mediation. And every dispute, every single one, whether it's in litigation or pre-litigation, should be mediated, as you all know. I'm preaching to the choir here, I know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we, you know, we specialize in mediation around here, too. So we, I don't know if we can get a certificate if we do enough hours in here.
And now I'd like to bring up Meyer Sankey, who's the president of the Southern California Mediation Association.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Wendy Gruel, and thank you for inviting me, Dan. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Southern California Mediation. It's the largest mediation association and the oldest one in this Southern California area. We have hundreds of members who volunteer their time and services. Last week, we did March Madness with the court. Together, we had an alliance. We sent out hundreds of mediators and did hundreds and hundreds of cases throughout the entire county to help settle cases that are clogging up the courts. So I want to honor all the volunteers and people who have devoted their time and effort in our organization to help the city, to help the community, to help individuals resolve their disputes in a proper and cooperative way as opposed to continuing an aggressive court battle. Yesterday, I finished the mediation. It was a lawsuit between a daughter and her mother. And the mother is in her eighties. I have to tell you that the beauty of it is to see a mother and daughter kiss and make up after resolving their disputes. There's nothing more satisfying for a mediator than to see this wonderful bonding after the resolution of a dispute. So I urge you to continue the program of honoring mediation. So I urge you to continue the program of honoring mediation. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Randy Hugh McMurray, president of the Consumers Attorneys Association of Los Angeles, to say a few words.
Hi, I'm Randy McMurray. I know some of you in the council. The Consumers Attorneys Association is the largest local trial association, trial lawyers association in the nation. We support mediation, and we couldn't survive, and the courts around couldn't survive, if we couldn't resolve our cases without the mediation. I'm the first African-American president of that association in its 60-year history, and it was a pleasure to see Lieutenant Uhura in here getting the honor this morning, because it's nice to see that things are changing and mediation makes changes possible in the court system. It makes it easier to get through. Thank you. Good morning.
And congratulations on being president of this new... not the new organization, but your presidency in the last several months. I'd like to now ask Alexander Williams, who's a mediator and retired judge, to also say a few words.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, when John Kennedy was inaugurated, the most famous line for me of his inaugural address was the last line, and it said, "Here on earth, God's work truly must be our own." I think for those of us who are mediators, we enjoy the occasional privilege and the everyday joy of trying to do God's work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just want you to know, Mr. President, that, you know, those all being four lawyers, they were very brief, you know?
Yeah. They put the briefs back in, lawyers.
Which is unusual, and I appreciate that, but no, their work is really incredible and a really important part of the city of Los Angeles. Last but not least is our own, Avis Ridley Thomas, who is in charge of our City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program here in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Wendy, for having done this for five years, and I'm very hopeful, Mr. President, that we continue this tradition that Daniel Bensvy has started with the city. We are now in our 20th year in the City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program, and our 1,800 community volunteers are as excited as they were on day one in establishing the program. They enjoy the experience of helping their fellow neighbors, their fellow community members resolve disputes. They do it so enthusiastically right here for the city of Los Angeles. We are continuing our partnerships, and I do appreciate those in the private sector who will work with us, that is, in volunteering their time to help resolve the everyday disputes that we have. The police department refers to us, that the various city departments like Animal Services and the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families, and hopefully other city departments, will try to find ways to resolve these problems so that they do not escalate and cause us much aggravation, and we spend a whole lot more time in resolving disputes than is necessary to do. So thank you very much, and we appreciate it, Wendy.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to present both to Avis and to Dan Bensvy a proclamation resolution declaring this Mediation Day in the city of Los Angeles for the fifth year in a row, and to thank all of our speakers for what they do to resolve conflict without having to go to court. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. And Mr. Labange had a quick introduction.
And I want to congratulate everybody, because mediation is the way to heaven, right? Okay. I didn't want to interrupt there, but we concluded there, got to take pictures. Members of council, Mr. President, and the audience here and everyone on Channel 35, we have very special guests here from Harvard here. I want to welcome Allison Lee, Christian Logan, Carolyn McDowell, as well as Megan McKenzie. If you could please give them a big welcome and stand and be recognized there by the City Council. And move over, just a quick introduction to all our friends from Harvard out here on spring break. They came, spring break, they didn't go to Florida, they came to the Los Angeles City Council. But they have an angel on their wing and our very own Sister Jenny from Puente Learnings. Let Sister Jenny a big hand. Welcome there, Harvard.
Thank you very much, and we'd like to welcome, of course, and I'd like to now recognize from the 10th Council District, the one, the only Councilmember, Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I have two presentations. One is, well, they're both near and dear to my heart, but today is Friday, but it's not just a regular Friday, it is Pet Adoption Friday. So I present to you a beautiful mixed terrier. She is a darling. Her name is Daisy. She was turned into one of our shelters by her owners that just could not afford to keep her anymore because of these tough financial times. But what we're trying to do is find somebody that is looking for unconditional love. I mean, this is what you will get with Daisy here. Let's turn Daisy around. Everybody, come on. Look at her. Daisy is looking for a home. I think she only weighs about five pounds. Here in the city of Los Angeles, we have a 100% adoption rate. Oh, wait a minute. Daisy already has found a mother. Well, our 100% adoption rate is going strong.
We hope Ms. Perry enjoys.
We still got it. We still got it, LA. Let's get a quick photo. She's a darling. Thank you, Mr. President. Now, if I could get Ariva Martin to join me? I think that's the first time that I never even got to the telephone number where you call if you want to adopt a pet. Next month is National Autism Month. So I think that it's fitting that this Friday, the Friday before April, that we recognize an organization called the Special Needs Network. It was founded by a Harvard-trained attorney and a successful music industry executive. But there's a story behind that. Years ago, Ariva Martin and Donna Ross discovered that their sons had autism. These are two smart, successful individuals, and they were so frustrated as they tried to access services through the county and state of Los Angeles. There was always an obstacle. There was always a hurdle. It was just something that made it more difficult than they believed that it had to be. So they got together and they said, "Look, here we are, two bright, educated people. How difficult must it be for some poor family or individuals who are working two and three jobs? Who's there to help them?" And they decided that they would be there to help them. This network since 2006 has provided services to low-income and poor people, over 15,000 families. Let's give them a round of applause. And it's not like their organization, that they grow money at the Special Needs Network. They hustle up money the best that they can because of their commitment to provide these services to families throughout the city of Los Angeles. Ariva Martin has been recognized as one of the women, one of the 10 women that is going to change the face of autism, and I'm very proud to have her as a friend. I'm proud of her and Donna and the organization that they had started. So please join me, City Council, in honoring Special Needs Network and its founder, Ariva Martin. And tell them about your event, and I'll add to it.
Thank you so much, Herb Wesson, Councilmember Wesson, for allowing us an opportunity to come here. I want to thank the illustrious Los Angeles City Council, the mayor, and all of these wonderful people that stand behind me, with me, beside me, because we are the face and we are the family of Special Needs Network. And we could not do what we do in communities throughout Los Angeles without the support of our elected officials, without the support of our board members, our parents, our volunteers, and our staff. So first, I'd just like to say thank all of you for taking time out of your busy morning to join Special Needs Network and to help us shine a bright light on autism. Autism now impacts one in every 150 child born in America. One in every 94 boy that's born will be impacted by this disorder. Millions and millions of people are living in our state. Twelve a day are diagnosed with this incurable disorder. So Special Needs Network works to bring resources, advocacy skills, training to families throughout South Los Angeles who are struggling to raise their disabled children. We are so proud to be able to work and partner with those families. And as we celebrate National Autism Month in April, we will be having a series of activities and events. One is our annual conference, which is on April 11th at the Junior Blind, where we bring experts from all over the country together to provide free resources and services to families, where we provide free childcare, toolkits, and other valuable information and resources to families. So again, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to shine a bright light on autism, to shine a light on the need for continued funding, for research, and services for families and children living with this disorder. Thank you again, Councilmember Wesson, for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Let's get a group shot. Come on, everybody. Everybody hug up, come on. Oh, I don't need this, this is yours. You guys could have gone back for a bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Our next presentation is from Council District 6, Tony Cardenas.
I'd like to introduce to you, the people of Los Angeles and the City Council of Los Angeles, to two young, wonderful individuals. Jocelyn De Luna, who was 10 when she made this wonderful work done in the community, and Mario De Luna as well, who was 12-year-old when they decided to go do some good work for sick children in Los Angeles. So on December 23rd, two days before Christmas in 2008, they took out all their savings and went to Valley Presbyterian Hospital to donate toys for the Pediatrics and Pediatrics Intensive Care Units. Before doing so, however, they had called on six other hospitals before they finally found a hospital that said, "Why, of course, you're welcome to come and bring gifts for our children that are in our hospital." Those five other hospitals said no, but I'd like to thank also Valley Presbyterian Hospital for responding to this kind gesture from these two young individuals. So first, I'd like to ask to come help with our presentation is Sylvia Henry from Valley Presbyterian Hospital to help me out with the presentation to Jocelyn and Mario.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cardenas. President and councilmembers, this is truly touching to me from my heart. Jocelyn and her brother reached out to help the children of Valley Presbyterian Hospital during the holidays. We are proudly the only remaining full-service, independent, nonprofit hospital serving the underserved community in the valley. And so, with that said, I'd like to read the Certificate of Appreciation for Jocelyn and her brother Mario, and it reads, "For being example of the giving spirit of Valley Presbyterian Hospital, the community we serve, of your support. Your gift to the children brought so much joy to the hospitalized nation during the holidays. We are grateful for your willingness to share your resources and are proud of the goodwill spirit that you continue to show that the people of the San Bernando Valley have." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sylvia. There's another thing that we'd like to celebrate today, but first let me mention something that's, I guess, very perfect. Today, we didn't schedule this for this purpose, but I think it's very appropriate that today their mother has received one of the greatest gifts anybody could receive on their birthday. As we all know, it's not the material things in life that matter. It is their mother Patricia De Luna's birthday today, and today, she's able to celebrate on her birthday the biggest gift that children can give to their parents, and that is that they're growing up to be good, giving people. That's all we want for our children, just be good, always do the right thing. And here we have two young people, ages 10 and 12, who have done a wonderful thing for the community, and lo and behold, on their mother's birthday, they're being honored by the city of Los Angeles. So Feliz cumpleaños, Patricia. Happy birthday. Well, I'm sure if Mario could, or if he was ready, he would also give this gift as well. But since he doesn't have long hair, it's Jocelyn, who's currently growing her hair so that she can donate the locks of her hair to Locks of Love, an organization that acquires hair for cancer patients. She had the idea to donate her hair, and I, as the councilman, asked her if she would mind if I would help her with that honor, and she agreed to. I don't know if she realizes, I don't have a barber's license or what have you, but I guess these kids these days, they think you're a councilmember, you know how to do anything. So right now, we're going to demonstrate for all of you another gift, another ability for this young lady, Jocelyn, to give, and that is, I am going to demonstrate how you go about donating hair to Locks of Love by cutting her hair before all of you. So, do we have some scissors?
They're much better barbers than Mr. Cardenas, I'm just warning you.
I don't have a state license. Everybody just bear with me.
He's a beauty school dropout.
I'm almost done. Is she crying yet?
No.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on.
Mr. Zion will be next. We'll leave it out later, don't you worry.
At this time, I'd like to give the new Jocelyn an opportunity to say a few words, and then Mario as well.
Thank you for giving me this award. I just hope that other kids will do the same thing.
Well, I just want to say the same thing. Just thank you for the award and hope all the kids will look to our example.
Good. Thank you very much. You know, Jocelyn, I was roasting Wendy Grul last night, and I could have probably used you in a little skit. We could have cut your hair saying you want to look like Wendy Grul. But again, this is wonderful to see our young people living the spirit of giving and understanding that, hey, it doesn't matter who you are, doesn't matter where you live, or what have you. If you put your thinking cap on and you follow your heart, there's wonderful things that you can do in the community. So for these young people to break open their piggy banks and say, "Hey, for Christmas, we're going to give some toys to some kids who can't spend time in their home with their families. We're going to do it in a hospital." And gosh, even though five sets of adults at five different hospitals didn't say yes, finally, we had a hospital who knows how to accept that kind of responsibility, and that's Valley Presbyterian Hospital. So once again, thank you to Valley Presbyterian Hospital. Thank you to Jocelyn and Mario for being the wonderful examples that you are, and we have some more gifts for you. We have some certificates. Jocelyn, this is for you. And Mario, this is for you, and these are certificates of commendation official by the city of Los Angeles to commemorate your wonderful good works. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas, and thank you very much to our young heroes. We appreciate you very much. Our last presentation will be Councilwoman Wendy Grul from the Second Council District for our second presentation.
Mr. President, it's quite an honor for me today to make this presentation, and I do want to thank all these kids, because they have been... do want to thank all these kids because they have been incredibly patient and quiet over the last year. And of course, it's because they're from Colfax Elementary School, which is my son's school, and they're a great school, but they're here today to support a very special woman at Colfax Elementary School. I'm pleased that we are recognizing Dana Stevens, who recently earned the prestigious Milliken Educator Award for her exceptional dedication to education. The Milliken Education Awards honors only 80 educators throughout the nation, throughout the nation. She's one of 80 in this country. So it's a very big honor that she is here today and that she was surprised. I was there that day. Dana had no idea that she was being selected. It was a special day, Assembly Day, and only the principal and the vice principal knew. And she was, and of course, the Milliken family, who came and presented her with this award. Now, at Colfax, she has worn many hats. She first started in 1989 as a bilingual educator and bilingual teacher. She became a literacy coach in 2006, and now is a part-time coach and Title I coordinator. As a literacy coach, Dana assists and supports the district's reading program and coordinates intervention programs for at-risk students. In addition, Dana is leading the development of the school's green curriculum, where students participate in tree plantings and maintain school gardens. And if that was not enough, that all of her job responsibilities, she also co-facilitates the Writers Club, the Student Council, and develops programs for community outreach. As a member of the local leadership council, she works with parents and student representatives, community representatives, to advise the council on assisting and strategies to assist English learners. She really understands what it means to be part of the community and to support these kids. And she is an inspiration not only to me and the Milliken Foundation, but here to these kids. You should have seen their faces that day when Dana was selected, as well as your fellow, I have to say, all of your coworkers, teachers, you name it, they were excited and knew that you were the best person to get this prestigious honor. And so I want to commend her and congratulate her for 18 years of outstanding leadership and for winning the extraordinary Milliken Education Award as a wonderful teacher at Colfax Elementary School. So let's give her a great round of applause. Now, you get to say a few words.
Good morning, City Council. It's a true honor to receive this award. I was completely shocked. But more importantly, it's a privilege to be working at Colfax Charter Elementary and to be a part of a movement that is making advancements for the education of our young students. And it's also a great privilege to be working with Student Council and my partner, Mrs. Chester, back here. These are our young student leaders, and they're fabulous people, and it's an honor to have them come down here, so I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any of you kids want to say one? One of you? Want to jump up? Go ahead, come on. Say your name first, okay?
I'm Isabella Howman. I'm the president of Colfax Elementary, and I just want to say that Ms. Stevens, she really deserved it, and she did a great job, so I think she was the one who really...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. We're very proud of Dana. We're proud of Colfax Elementary School, and it's clear that other people recognize her leadership and how important it is. So thank you to all of you, and thank you to Colfax Elementary School. And okay, kids, you can all wave, and they'll see yourself on TV there, okay? There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul, and thank you to all the students that are here today. And we have one last presentation, also from Council District 14, Mr. Weiser.
Okay. Now, that was fun. Go back there. Go take a picture. How are you?
They did. That was impressive. I go, "What? What?"
He's going to speak with me. Let's consider...
I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to introduce Carlos, and then you'll introduce him.
Carlos.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing us this time and my colleagues to share with the public a very special day. We are commemorating the life of Monsignor Oscar Romero from El Salvador. As many of you know, he was assassinated at the time in El Salvador when there was a civil war in the country, and today, his death goes unresolved, and we are not only today here commemorating the life and what he did for many Salvadorans, both abroad from El Salvador and in the country, but both to ask the newly-elected president in El Salvador to please continue the investigation. Many people want answers as to what exactly happened. And as you know, this past couple of weeks, El Salvador elected a new president. Myself, with a number of other individuals, were invited to be international observers to ensure that there was fair and transparent elections. What happened was that there was a gentleman elected by the name of Funes, whom many called the Obama of El Salvador, and whom many have the hopes that this new president will bring more equality and more justice to a country that so rightly deserves it. The democracy in El Salvador is in its infancy. It's only been a few years that, in fact, there's been free elections, and with this new election, it shows that democracy in El Salvador is growing. It's been given a lot of confidence by the voters and the international community, and a lot of what happened these last few weeks in El Salvador is really because of the work of a person like Oscar Romero, the Monsignor from El Salvador. And so with me today, we have Carlos Vaqueroano. Many of you know him as the executive director of the SALIF, the Salvadoran American Legal Defense and Education Fund here in Los Angeles. And as you all know, in Los Angeles, we have the highest concentration of Salvadorans outside of El Salvador. So it's important for us to continue to observe what happens in El Salvador. What affects that country affects us here in Los Angeles and many of our residents. So with that, let me introduce to you a man that does so much for the Salvadoran community and all of Los Angeles, Carlos Vaqueroano. Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Jose Weiser. I really want to give you special thanks for joining us two weeks ago to witness and to be part of history. What a best way to pay tribute to Monsignor Romero than electing a new president. Our president elect, Mauricio Funes. So we're all happy to be here today to ask you to once again pay tribute to Monsignor Romero by approving a resolution naming Monsignor Romero, March 24th, the day of Monsignor Romero. I have invited many friends who have fought for many years on behalf of the Salvadoran people, but I want to invite a special friend who's representing the Monsignor Romero Charter School, a school that was named after Monsignor Romero, and I want to invite Carlos, my tocayo.
Oscar Romero was a Roman Catholic priest and an archbishop. After Oscar Romero witnessed numerous violations of human rights, he began to speak out for the poor and for the people who were victims of El Salvador's civil war. This led to many conflicts with the government of El Salvador. He spoke out against the United States Army's support and calling soldiers to tell them to disobey orders that harmed human rights. Unfortunately, he was shot in March 24th, 1980, and he died. His leadership relates to how our school is being taught because it lets us know that we can stand for whatever is right, even if you're the only one. And if you put a lot of effort into something, you could become to whatever you want to be.
Thank you, Carlos.
So with that, we have here a commemoration of the life of Monsignor Romero that a lot of these children, the children who are with us here today and all of Los Angeles, will be celebrating March 24th, and the motion I introduced, that we will vote upon next week, will declare Day of Remembrance of Archbishop Oscar A. Romero of El Salvador. And thank you very much for being with us today. And these are the types of events where our young people could see and have a role model that did so much, and like our young Carlos said, even if you're the only voice, that voice can make a huge, huge difference for justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and appreciate all of our special presentations. It's now 11:25, and as mentioned, we'll now turn to public comment. My first speaker is in San Pedro. That's Judy Carnes. And after that will be Donald Compton, also in San Pedro as well. So a very good morning to you.
Good morning, City Council members, and I'm here today to especially, once again, thank our Councilwoman Janice Hahn in making sure that the Harbor Animal Shelter would remain open. God bless her, God bless all of the community who was behind it's being kept open and not closed. And we understand that L.A. Animal Services is suffering, as is all the departments from the City Council constraints, or not City Council constraints, budget constraints. So my next problem, and Councilwoman Hahn, God bless you, we need you again, is actually opening the Clinico Spay-Neuter Clinic at the Harbor Animal Shelter. It's a brand-new, low-cost clinic that has never opened. And, you know, the shelter is staying open, but the clinic hasn't opened yet because the floors are in bad shape. The floors are cracked, they're peeling, the floor just is not usable. Now, I've been given guarantees by Tony Royster's administrative assistants and for the public. Tony Royster is the general manager of General Services. They're the fix-it-do-it people within the city. I've been assured by Beverly Simpson Pleasance and Tina Furman, his administrative assistants, that they have their full cooperation in getting the work done. Now, I understand there might be a clinical representative in council chambers today. God bless them. You know, they're going to afford the city low-cost spay-neuter services. I know you're going to address item number 19 later, but please, can't we get the work done? I mean, we'll volunteer down here. We have representatives from Wilmington who I know will work with us, and we can do the work, and have you folks approve it after, but it's not a laughing matter. We need the spay-neuter clinic opened. Councilwoman Hahn, we need you to help us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donald Compton. After that will be Arthur Hernandez. And as Mr. Compton's coming forward, Ms. Hahn, did you want to say something briefly?
Yeah, I know we're not supposed to respond, and I know we have this on the item, but I just really want to let Judy know that my office has been working very hard with Department of Animal Services, Tony Royster. We found a way to complete the work on the floor of that spay-neuter clinic so that it will reopen very shortly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarification. Donald Compton?
Yes. Thank you, President Garcetti, ladies and gentlemen, Janice Hahn. Donald Compton, I'm one of the three hometown advocates here. I've lived here all 67 of my years. Arthur Hernandez is here 68 years, and Antonio Rios couldn't make it. Ladies and gentlemen, and Janice Hahn in particular, last night in Wilmington, the senior center, one of the most important meetings for the central east Wilmington, dealing with the problem with the Watson South Yard and its McFarlane-Eisman entrance there, was discussed quite frankly. Jesse Marquez Jr., thank goodness, was there and exposed exactly what we're up against. There's been a private contract done 2005 between CARB and BNSF that has all but hamstrung CARB into doing anything about this serious particulate matter in the South Watson residential area and the Lost Flores homes, Ms. Hahn, and we have a resolution to the whole problem in that residential area. The tank cars carrying toxic waste, chemicals, flammables, explosives, 24 hours a day, and of course, the noises, the whistles, and all the rest. We can get rid of all that in one fell swoop in 90 days, Ms. Hahn, if you get behind this. Jesse Marquez supports this. All we do is get BNSF Railroad, Burlington Northern Santa Fe, to route at least their tank car operation through the Ron Groves Route Around. Mr. Ron Groves, a distinguished civil engineer of the Harbor Department, has located this, mapped it, and stands behind it. It's ready to go. It'll keep the entire system coming up from the south out of a residential area with their noises and their hazardous waste and their particulate matter entirely, and keep it in the industrial zone where it belongs, over to the Alameda Corridor, up through the Thonard Junction, and into the North Yard where there are no homes, just a cemetery. We strongly urge this to be done. It can be done in 90 days with a route around in one fell swoop. You'll get rid of the diesel particulates, the noise, and the hazardous cargo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Compton. Appreciate your comments this morning. Arthur Hernandez is our next speaker, also in San Pedro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Garcetti, and District 15, Janice Hahn. I made some points of comment here in the memorandum. This morning, I came up here, I met Mr. Diego Valdez, Mrs. Kane, Officer Garcia, and Mrs. Lai, who works in the office in here. New people that I've met over here at the 15th District City Council in San Pedro, up on the sixth floor, seventh floor. I've been in jail, I've been in there, I came out, and it was very interesting. We thank the Port of Los Angeles. LA Harbor will be known as one of the wonders of the world. If you, people in the harbor, if you haven't taken a drive around, look at the harbor. Right now, it's one of the wonders of the world, and you can enjoy it and tell all your relatives about it because it's wonderful. We have some engineering, air engineering in here second to none. The Goods Movement, I'd just like to say that I am for the Goods Movement, and it's important. Air Resources Board meeting, EIR Medication Wilmington, the Watson Yard, it was a heavy meeting. We talked about the development of the Watson Yard and also the switching. And finally, at the end of that, we came out with a route around to Alameda. That was on the 26th. Then there's a new organization in Wilmington, the Madras, are known as the Mamas, and that's an upcoming group, and everybody will be hearing about that. We made three proposals. One was for three seats in the neighborhood council, also establish a new Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and the next one was Democratic. Also, Mrs. Moreno is finally going forward with the Wilmington Business Card with two logos, and it was something that was passed, started three years ago, and it finally passed and went, it's going forward, and it is excellent.
Thank you very much. If you just want to conclude, we have a two-minute time. May I apologize. If you want to say a last comment before we go on to our next speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. We're so happy to have you all participating and active participation today from San Pedro and Wilmington. Now, I'd like to go to those here in City Council, Leonard Wayne Rose Jr., followed by Lucy Caruso, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams.
Leonard Wayne Rose, I hear that you talk about jobs. This is 2010, El Appababa signed a bill just a few weeks ago where people get jobs, and there's a number you could call, you could call 866-861-2110. This is a job at downtown LA, East LA, you know, and do tests, you know, and this is Baba, where people get jobs, you know, and they're for it. And then, don't forget the movie, The Cross, today, author Blessed movie, he's going to share about his life story on this book here today, if you get a chance to go AMC Theater, because there are 13 theaters in Los Angeles, so watch it today. And I want to give this copy for you guys here, and all 15 papers. This is a paper I talked to last Wednesday, I put it together, make it simple, make it all clear, that we talked to the Earth scientists, the Sun scientists, you know, 50 years past and future, and what could happen in the future when the Sun will melt the Earth, you know, and you got to talk to them, because I know in movie AMC Theater, talk about it too. It's scary movie, but it's a true story about all the terrorists, 50 years, and past, present, and future, but that's in time, so you could talk together about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and give it to the officer. Lucy Caruso, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Jack Warren Richardson. Lucy Caruso, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Jacqueline Richardson.
Hello, I wanted to talk a little about the new county hospital. It seemed like before, it was like better care and follow-up over there, I mean, I'm over here with all this junk on me. I was in the hospital Wednesday night because they wanted to check my heart, right? And then they, like, I'll say how bad it is, and they'll say what's up to here. I wouldn't even have known that because follow-up, like, wasn't done to see how bad I was getting and stuff. And then there's like competition between LA County, there's like conflict between, or LA Free Clinic, and like, well, I'm not listening to them, or how come they're not doing it? But the thing is, is it makes my health suffer by, I don't know why they're, they're not together, you know what I mean? And what I want to mention, you know that song, "LA Women," or "You're the Lucky Little Lady at the City," you know? It's about the shelters, right? Not just Los Angeles, I was in another county too, like in New Image, because I was going to jumpstart my career. You can't keep your clothes there, so then I can't get to these jobs, I can't, and when I go to the other shelter, they say, well, you have to get your shower at 4 o'clock, you know, or you can't sleep here. I can't tell an employer, we're not in the economic market for me to tell employer, well, I have to go take a shower, sorry. Or being on upper beds where it makes it where you can't climb it, and then my house goes out. Or, they don't work, they just don't work, and I don't, I don't know who to talk to about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clyde Williams.
Hey, this is Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Serena. Last night, we had a presentation by Caltrans regarding the infamous State Route 710, demoted from Interstate 710. There were over 100 people last night spending three hours listening to the presentation, but we only got 30 minutes of questions and answers, mostly non-answers. Al Hamra got two weeks' notice, South Pasadena got over a month's notice of the public presentation. In El Serena, we got first three days' notice, and only seven people came up. Hugo Garcia, the Neighborhood Council President, he got them to give us a second presentation, so last night was the second go-around. The response of most people was fear and anger, and in fact, the voice says, what are we, chopped liver for the 710? Why are we angry? 20 years, Caltrans has been the largest slumlord in El Serena. In the 1990s, they gave South Pasadena a tunnel and were going to give us a ditch. Caltrans has not responded to public records requests for even the public contracts for all of the consultants, and there are a lot of them. What happens? We get the shafts and the portals. We don't get any interchange at Huntington, Figueroa, or any of the other major thoroughfares in northeast LA. So, all we're asking for is let those who benefit, Al Hamra and South Pasadena, suffer the impacts and the risks of this tunnel in the future. Shift the portal, which is already established as more than 2,500 feet long, over to Al Hamra. We don't want the portal, we don't want the shafts, give them to Al Hamra, they will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Richardson, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Carlos Vacarano, and Daniel Gus. Mr. Zuma Dog, we have not finished going through all the cards.
Good morning, this, I'm going to make one statement, it's going to be one sentence, and it's about agencies. The statement is, some agencies do not do good jobs if there's money involved in the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks? I'm sorry?
I just made one statement in regard to agencies, and the statement again is, I'm sorry, you didn't understand me. The statement again is, some agencies do not do good jobs if money is involved in the situation.
Thank you, thank you very much for being here, I appreciate that. Mr. Sacks?
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Budget discussions at your last meeting were very enlightening, dancing around the real costs that lead to the mounting city and state budget deficit was pretty, was pretty interesting. The cost of government, people kind of like hinted at it, but never really mentioned the nasty words. Last October, I mean, 2007, the LA Times did a story regarding GM's efforts to renegotiate its contracts with its workers, putting their true cost of labor at $75 when you include the benefits. There's where the problem is. I mentioned then, that the real cost of government will be the 900-pound gorilla in your negotiations to eliminate any kind of deficit. Continuing your policy of raising fees to generate more revenue, crying wolf that fees needed to be raised to provide for more police, getting elected to be re-elected, these entrenched mindset needs to change. Spay and neutering and elephants are commendable pursuits, but the city is going broke. Yesterday, at Metro, a contentious item on the agenda was an extension with a railcar manufacturer. The gorilla in that conversation was the manufacturer's promise to build a plant in LA. The smokescreen in this item was that the manufacturer should have showed this commitment to the original contract it had with MTA, they wouldn't be three years behind in delivery of cars, and 33 cars behind that. A council not willing to step up when an agency exceeds cost on a project by $2 billion, such as occurs at Lawa, instead employing, instead applauding the effort, I don't see much hope for there being much of a contract, a budget deficit discussion that will be fruitful for the public.
Thank you. Carlos Vacarano? Daniel Gus? Followed by Zuma Dog, followed by Mary O'Connor.
Good morning, City Council, I have two quick items to bring to your attention. For three and a half years, Mr. Box has held on to a geriatric dog named Stu. I'm sure you've seen the emails. For some reason, this vindictive behavior is going on for three and a half years, and since Mr. Box is here today, I'm wondering if you can ask him about this, because it's nothing other than vindictiveness, because Mr. Box has held on to Jeff De La Rosa's other dog, Maeve, for three and a half years. You can't have an animal shelter general manager who's an animal abuser, and since Mr. Box is here today, please have him explain why geriatric dogs are being held captive in the city's shelters for three and a half years. I know we're going to be speaking about the spay-neuter voucher on item 19 later today. I was given a $10,000 grant, I am going to be providing free spay-neuter services to anybody in the southern council districts, Parks, Perry, Weiss, Hahn, Garcetti, or anybody else in the, any other council districts, because Mr. Box just doesn't know about spay-neuter, I guess. We're going to be providing free spaying and neutering, free microchips, free shots, free flea medication, free ear exam and cleaning if needed, free dental cleaning and exam if needed. I'm working with Jen Perry's office, with Dennis Zein's office, with Eric Garcetti's office, so please tell your staffers that I am ready to provide comprehensive spay-neuter and related services for any dog, especially the big dogs or cats in the city of Los Angeles. I have a few dozen of my business cards, so please have your offices contact me. I'm going to be spending this money at a great clinic in southern LA called Clinico, at clinico.org. If Mr. Box isn't providing spay-neuter services, I'm here to tell you, I'm giving it away for free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Mary O'Connor, followed by Raphael, I think it's Nadal.
Yes, it's time to pay some very close attention, especially to the media, the newspaper, the talk show hosts, city council, the people of Los Angeles, and Maritonio Villarosa. I've come here just about three years, and never before have I delivered more important words to Los Angeles City Council and to the viewers. I will begin this speech and announcement in five seconds. Four. In three seconds, the announcement. Two seconds. I'm here to say, Wednesday, item number 28 of the Los Angeles City Council agenda, the financial experts were here to issue a warning that the Lacer Fund, the Lacer Retirement Pension Fund, lost $7 billion this past year, and that money will have to be covered out of the general fund. The experts predict by the year 2012, we will be spending 56 cents. 56% of every city dollar will be going for what Wendy Gruel on TV called this pension bailout. And yes, people, it's a bailout. And I'm here to say that Maritonio Villarosa acted fraudulently under his investment schemes, and I want to know when this $7 billion was lost. Ladies and gentlemen, do you know that $7 billion means the end of Los Angeles? And you need to take measures immediately, because also, Morello Maddox has declared bankruptcy, or at least they will, I hear things before they're in the media. So you got Morello Maddox going bankrupt, you have Lacer $7 billion in the hole coming out of the general fund this meeting. I want a specific action from this city council, a decision of what to do to close the gap, not discussions of felt tightening, not we need to do this, we need to talk about that. The people of Los Angeles want you 14 members that are here today to do a specific action that will save money and close this gap, as we are going into what I was told is Armageddon by one of the council members.
Our next speaker, Mary O'Connor, again followed by Raphael Nadal, Jeffrey De La Rosa, Matt Dowd, and then Michael Hunsman.
Hi, I've contacted all of the city council members, actually, multiple times. I'm disabled, and I was evicted, and the sheriff's calling Animal Control. When I went to claim my animals, I was not given one of them back. I was given all of them except the one dog who I was told was stolen out of Animal Control and taken home as someone else's personal property. And that was two months ago, and I need to know what's going on, because I hadn't lost my legal right to the dog, I was just told that someone took her home, and that's not legal.
Thank you. And I know we do have, Mr. Box is here, and his staff, and I saw your email, I know you did send it to my office as well, if you may meet Animal Services there, the head of Animal Services can chat with you about that as well.
Yeah, they're, they're really not cooperating. I mean, they lied to one journalist that I was harassing them. I showed up once in person, and they said, you're harassing us, we'll contact the police, and that wouldn't be the first time for you. They can't shift the blame and pretend that they're the victims instead of my dog.
Thank you. Raphael?
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Raphael Nadal, and I am a candidate for the 32nd Congressional District. Ladies and gentlemen, let me share with you what I think is an absolute disgrace, to see hundreds, if not thousands, of my fellow veterans sleeping on street corners. This is the very district that Mrs. Sedilio now runs or wished to run for higher office. It's an absolute disgrace, and it shouldn't happen in the city of angels. In the coming weeks, I will be sending a letter to the president and to the Veterans Affairs, in hope that we can purchase building downtown for it to be housed and for it to be renovated, to serve for Veterans Affairs Department, and to help veterans relieve some of the pressures in our street. Additionally, this will bring jobs to the city of Los Angeles by way of contractors. So, two things will be achieved, getting some veterans off the street and helping with contractors with jobs. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jeffrey De La Rosa, followed by Matt Dowd, followed by Michael Hunsman.
Good morning, Council. My name's Jeffrey De La Rosa, I'm a homeowner in the 13th District. I'd like to thank Mr. Gus for bringing the matters of my dogs to the council's attention. To clarify, one of my dogs was accused of attacking a neighbor's dog. There was a hearing which was held in November of 2005. In October last year, a Superior Court judge threw that decision out. Why? Because due process was denied, the Constitution was violated, the municipal code was violated, and the Animal Services Department's own regulations were violated. The other dog actually bit one of my employees. However, the hearing examiner found that he was not dangerous. Mr. Stuckey, on December 9th, 2005, transferred that decision-making power over to a captain, which is against the municipal code. After that, about four days later, Mr. Stuckey was fired by the mayor. I'm still stuck with that decision, I'm in the Court of Appeals with that decision. Over the last three and a half years, I have spent $14,000 in boarding to keep my dog off the city property, and an additional $5,000 in attorney fees. Mr. Box has published my name, my home address, on the city's website for more than two years. Last year, they took my address down. I'm the only person in the, as a, that is a citizen of the city of Los Angeles whose name appears on the city's website, the Animal Services website. Why? Because Mr. Box is a vindictive, insecure egomaniac, and he needs to go. And I hope that you will take that opportunity in this last crisis to get rid of him. Thank you.
Mr. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Yeah, thank you, it's nice to see the remote feed from San Pedro. But let me tell the people in San Pedro, if you're out there and you're using the remote feed, your councilwoman, Janice Hahn, was involved in a big old conversation with Bill Rosendahl, didn't hear a thing you said. But that's not why I'm here, I'm really just appalled and disgusted at the lip service that we get from the city council. It's not me, it's everybody. And Tom Le Bond, he leads the pack with the Lip Service Brigade, followed by Bill Rosendahl, of her, you know, had nothing but empty promises from Bill Rosendahl for three years. He keeps coming up to me and saying, oh yeah, hi Matt, you know, let me, let me be all friendly, and I'll do this, and get here, hit someone's number, call them, they'll call you, do this, do that, and nothing at all. And now we get this latest thing, Greg Smith's telling me that Laces lost $7 billion, and here's Zuma Dog up here, two years ago, 18 months, telling you that the stock market's peaked out, everything's going to crash, the subprime mortgage crisis, the whole thing. Morello Maddox right here, one of the biggest developers in downtown, yes, belly up today, bankrupt, they filed. So there's a bunch of vendors who, who've rent from them, there's a bunch of developers, and they're all going belly up, and that's Jan Perry, her district, Mayor Villarosa, we need some transparency here, we need to see who was doing what with all those investments. Let's get them out in the, see, they're all meant to be experts, and we told you the market was going to tank. 18 months ago, it sat at 12,000 points, the Dow Jones, for like three months, it could have emptied out all the holdings, all the real estate. It was written on the wall like the graffiti in Dennis Zein's district. So, you know, I invested in the Dow Jones when it was 6,600, one month ago, see, it's timing, you've got none.
Mr. Hunsman? Michael Hunsman?
Good morning, my name is Michael Hubman, I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist and a member of CASI, or the Coalition for the Abolition of Safer Cities Initiative. Last week, I talked about the manifestations of safer cities, namely oppressive policing, selective enforcement, and violence undercover of authority. Now, I'm going to give some specific examples of how this has manifested. The other day, I was sitting at a conference table at United Coalition Project East at the corner of Sixth and Gladys, right outside the window, on the corner, the police had a middle-aged man up against the window. He was handcuffed with his nose against the glass. After a while, the police left, but the man remained. I went outside and I asked him, what happened? He told me that the police pulled up in a car and asked me if I was on probation or parole, he said I was obliged to say yes. He told me that without any further interaction, he was pushed up against the building, handcuffed, then they interviewed him. Then they interviewed him. When they had left, they left him alone and moved on to interview someone else. None of us would put up with this kind of thing in our neighborhoods. We would be down at City Hall or the Police Commission. We would be asking, "Why are you profiling people? Why are you stopping people without probable cause? What about our constitutional right to presumption of innocence?" But this is Skid Row. When you're homeless and living on the street, you are unable to, you're made to feel powerless. You are engaged in a full-time struggle, all the while being persecuted by the sovereign. It does not occur to you that you should go to City Hall and stand up for your rights. If you have no identification, you won't get past security. If all of your worldly possessions are in a large plastic bag or a shopping cart, you can't afford to leave them unattended while you are visiting City Hall. It's just not right to use probation to harass people just because they live on Skid Row. Tomorrow will be a House Subcommittee hearing with Maxine Waters, LA Southwest College, 10 o'clock. At, yeah, and I'll be there. Hope you will, too.
Thank you. Sorry, I mispronounced your last name. I apologize. Thank you. That does end public comment. Mr. Cook, next item.
Item 11, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to make a technical-
And Mr. Parks, before I, we do have public comment cards. Do you want to hear those first, or?
Yes, public comment first.
Mr. Zuma Dog, Mr. Matt Dowd. Mr. Zuma Dog?
Yes, this is somewhat complex, and I barely know what I'm talking about audit because I wasn't expecting to speak. But let the people know that the sales and use tax, this is about the equalization audits. Hey, I'm glad Wendy's here. The sales and use tax. I, okay, they want to transfer $1.2 million in the reserve fund. Let me tell you, people, you need to pay close attention to this. And I'm here to say that it was just announced on Wednesday, yes, it was announced Wednesday, that the city lost $7 billion in the Lacer retirement and pension funds because of risky Wall Street investments and investments into sinking downtown development projects, like Grand Avenue project that's going nowhere, all the stuff that related to it, it's all sitting vacant and plummeting, and now Morello Maddox is now bankrupt. And all those projects are going down, and the city's not going to be making the money they thought, and this is going to definitely be affecting the sales revenue tax. City of Los Angeles, you're not even going to have to do an audit. You're just going to look at the coffers, there's not going to be a penny in there. Because I'm telling you, Marantonio Villarogosa, I think he's going to end up in prison if they ever start to look into Lacers and see how these investments were going. Because I certainly know that over a year ago, I blogged, and I was contacted by people inside City Hall that said the Lacer Fund is being misappropriated, and there's a lot of shadiness. And I'm not David Zonheiser from the LA Times, so I couldn't take it any further than just warn the people. And I've warned you every step of the way, city council, about the foreclosure problems, about the rising price of gas. You weren't going to be able to run the city. You're going to be in this exact situation, and now you're doing nothing about it. And then the mayor just blew $7 billion. And I'm saying he blew it because I'm here to say, if you look into those Lacers, if you look into the investments that were being made in the Lacer Pension Fund, you will see people going to jail. And so I hope that the federal investigators look into the Lacers and open up the books and see where this money was being invested, and look into the downtown projects it was being invested into, and look into the CRA. And I'm here to say, people are going to jail over this Lacer pension fraud that we are on the hook for 56 cents on the dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. I think he needs some water now.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to take a minute on this one. See, what we have to do here, and the taxpayers can take notice of this, and I'll just translate the agenda item. See, the state of California is broke right now, too. Arnold and a lot of the legislators have run the state into the ground. So what they did is they came and did an audit of the City of Los Angeles, and from 2002 till 2006, they found that you hadn't paid the Board of Equalization Tax to the state of $1.2 million. So we've got to take the $1.2 million out of the reserve fund right here. That's what's happening. Bye-bye to another $1.2 million out of the reserve fund because you didn't pay the taxes way back in 2002 to 2006. And now, look, we're in a budget crisis, and you've got to make back payments.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That's our final speaker on that matter. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask we make a technical amendment on page 2, on recommendation 2, that we change the dollar figure that was on the draft report to 1.219,306,048. And also that we add a recommendation number 3, that we request the Controller and the city attorney to appeal this notice of determination and report back to the Budget and Finance Committee in 60 days.
Very well. No other speakers on this matter? Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Matters approved. Next item, please.
Item 18, called special for cards.
Number 18. Mr. Arnold Sacks, followed by Mr. Matt Dowd.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This item refers to community programming, funding, and I'm just curious, what point does the city council in their budget discussions enter into deciding to cut these discretionary funds that go to each one of the council members? In an article from March 11th in the Press Telegram, Long Beach Budget Panelists Criticized. They state they have a budget deficit in Long Beach also. Two options that were presented to the Long Beach Council. One is cut 15% of the council members' discretionary budgets. City Council seems to be adding more funding. The other option is cut 14.1% from their budget that funds all council offices, including the full uncontrollable costs that may vary from district to district. Council members, you have a budget crisis. In case you haven't heard, you usually don't pay attention to what we say on this side of the microphone anyway. But it's going to come home to roost. You need to take some action. These discretionary funds for these council offices and all this, these underground utility funds, these, damn, what's the word I'm thinking of? I'm having a brain cramp. The, from the pipeline franchise fees that go to all these different funds, all these magical accounts, we need to have some accounting on these accounts so that the public doesn't have their fees raised when they have to go in and pay fees.
Thank you. Zuma Dog.
Matt had his first. You want him to go?
Well, he already called me. That's the whole purpose of the cards, remember, to orderly-
I didn't see your card, but go ahead.
Well, anyway, I'll take it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is, see, you know, this could be a good one, people, and, you know, like, see, I don't like to come down to City Hall, but when I do come down here, because I have to, I'm compelled to because of the things that are happening in the community that are unacceptable. So I'm going to speak on some of these things, too, but this is a good one. Yeah, this is okay. $25,000 we're transferring to support community programs and groups in Council District 2. Now, all I want to say is it could be $250,000 you could be giving to the community groups, but guess what? All the money's gone on outside council, and all, hundreds of thousands of dollars this city council tips into law firms around the City of Los Angeles to defend actions that are really indefensible, and you should have just listened to the community first.
Mr. Dog? Zuma Dog?
All right. I would just like to declare today, March 27th, we are in a new economic era. We are in the era of transparency, the era of Zuma Dog, LA's own Daniel Hammond. And I'm here to tell you, council, that we know that you know that we know that you know that we know that you know. And I'm here to tell you on this spending, I don't know if you heard, because you barely ever pay attention when you have any top information in these chambers, but it was announced on Wednesday that the city lost $7 billion in Lacer Pension Funds. So that means 56 cents of every dollar will be going simply to cover the losses. I'd like the people at home and all city council members to ask themselves if for every dollar they took in, they had to take 56 cents of it to cover a pension bailout. You wouldn't be running the city very efficiently. Now, you want money for community services. From now on, you are going to have to explain to Zuma Dog what this money's being spent on. So we're starting right now. I want to hear answers. You want money to fund programs. It doesn't say where the money's being spent. It doesn't say what program. It doesn't say what for. It just says that you want funding to support community programs. Well, guess what? I don't trust any of you council members for non-transparent money. So I know that it's Friday. I know that you have a lot of campaign contributions to raise, and you've got all kinds of special interest money to collect, and I know you're not going to do a darn thing about closing the $7 billion financial bailout for your own pension funds after you fraudulently put it into Wall Street. And I'm saying people will be going to prison over this. I want to know, where's this money being spent, for what programs? Because no longer will the people of Los Angeles allow you to say, "We're just funneling money into something that you don't know what it is," and then, "Hey, this money better make it into the community." And I want answers now. Where's it being spent? The people watching want to know. If you don't answer, you didn't answer to them.
That concludes that item. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, or close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 19, called special by Councilmember Cardenas, and there are cards on it.
Mr. Cardenas, you want to hear the speakers first? Okay. We will go to the speakers. Let's go to San Pedro. Judy Carnes in San Pedro.
Councilman Cardenas, thank you, and I thank all of the people who had the courage to bring this issue out into the light. Spay neuter may seem to those who aren't fond of animals like something insignificant, a waste of the city's money. However, every, by state law, it is mandated that every animal be held at a city shelter a determined period of time. Unfortunately, as animals are breeding freely today, any animal that's out there messing around, or whatever one would want to term it, will have a puppy or a kitten in approximately 60 days. I calculated it to be approximately May the 25th. It is so important to get this program back on track immediately, and I thank the gentleman who offered the $10,000. There are many other corporations who have employee matching funds, who have grants available, and we've offered our services on a grant proposal rider. I used to do this for a living successfully before I got involved full-time with the animals. But it's important that we get all of the support of all the council members to go back to their own constituents and let them know that there are ways of preventing unwanted births. And I do thank the council, again, I really thank Councilwoman Hahn, who's progressive thinking in the past, and I know now in the future, will help us get the clinical flagship spay neuter clinic. It's going to be one of six. Get it open. It has not opened yet. Get it opened and get it running. It's prices, I'm not a member, I mean, I'm not affiliated with them, but get it open and have it up and running, and I thank everyone again. I thank all the animal-concerned people out there in the audience who've made the trek down to City Hall today, and go out there and do the good work. You've been doing it. Let's continue, okay? Thanks.
Hey, Ms. Carnes, let's go to the San Fernando Valley to Van Nuys. Cheryl Green in Van Nuys. Good afternoon.
Good morning. Well, yes, good afternoon. Thank you. Two programs you're looking at this morning, to reinstate the $70 coupon and the $30 coupon. So everyone's aware, the $70 coupon requires low-income verification. You have to make less than $30,000 in order to be accepted for the $70 coupon. Most citizens don't qualify for that. The majority of the coupons written for the city are the $30 coupons. This offsets spay cost for all citizens of Los Angeles. Which brings up Councilman Wesson's very poignant story this morning about the poor owner who had to turn in her little terrier because she couldn't afford the terrier. That $30, $30 cost can buy a bag of groceries. I think that speaks volumes to the issue surrounding the city and the importance of the $30 coupon. Let's look at it from a fiscal standpoint. One animal spayed prevents four or five animals from being born. At intake, housing, vet, and euthanasia cost to the city that the city has to pay for of over $100 per animal, that's $500 cost the city won't have to incur. $500 cost you won't have to incur versus a $30 coupon you can incur. The math is simple. Look at how you can save money by reinstating that program. Look at a $30 coupon offsetting a bag of groceries. I think the math is clear and the answer is clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to go back to City Hall. Here we are. Daniel, yes? Mr. Dowd, you'll get your turn.
Spaying and neutering, in the media, Ed Bokes called spaying and neutering trimming the fat from the city budget. Trimming the fat to help a poor person with a $70 certificate, or anybody who wants it, a $30 certificate. I don't know how enforcing the law and helping a poor person with a certificate is trimming the fat. This is no different from all of the other detached issues that Mr. Bokes has had since the day he got here. The problem is, we have this fiasco about the spay neuter vouchers because Mr. Bokes is also enabled by an Assistant General Manager named Linda Barth, who just enables these problems, and unfortunately, Mr. Jim Bickhart of the mayor's office. These are the people who are covering for Mr. Bokes that time and again, three or four times a year, we have another fiasco, and this is the latest one. And spay neuter is not fat. The grant I just recently received won't last long if the city council wants to help me. I'm going to show you what I can do with $10,000 and zero overhead. I'm running this free spay neuter program with my cellphone and my laptop and not a penny of overhead. And why is it that one person can do so much for 50 to 100 dogs, and Mr. Bokes with a $20, $22 million budget calls it trimming the fat? These are helping poor people, and if you agree that it's time to get rid of Mr. Bokes, and I hope that you do, based on his inflammatory comments towards city council and the media, it's also time to ask the mayor to reassign Jim Bickhart and for you to find out a way to reassign Linda Barth somewhere else into the city. Spaying and neutering is not fat. Enough is enough. This is the end. This is the 15th or 16th controversy this man has had in four years. This is law. It's not trimming the fat. You know what fat is? Fat is Mr. Bokes's car. And reimbursing him, reimburse him for a car, reimburse him for mileage. That's what fat is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Gregory Pollak, Gregory, followed by Jeff De La Rosa.
Honorable council, honorable council members, I come before you today to ask you to support the motion to reinstate the spay neuter voucher program. Spay neuter is key to reducing the overabundance of animals entering the city's shelters. I'm afraid that our General Manager has crashed the spay neuter program. Rumor has it that if a peace officer crashes a patrol car, he receives two weeks unpaid. I suggest that the General Manager and the Assistant Manager receive two weeks unpaid, and they volunteer their time, like so many other Angelenos, come into the shelters and volunteer their time, and go into the parks and volunteer their time. The coupons are a tax break or an incentive for citizens, Angelenos, to come into compliance with the spay neuter ordinance. I have before you a donation for the spay neuter voucher program to assist in the payments to other Angelenos who would need this service. And I present that to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Sergeant-at-Arms will receive that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff De La Rosa, followed by Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I have some suggestions on where you might be able to recover some funding to help this program. Last year, the mayor presented you with his proposal for the budget for Animal Services, and this council added $50,000. and this council added $500,000 for salaries. I don't know why. I'm not an expert on these kinds of things. But that $500,000 would have paid for a lot of spay neuters. Now, there's a situation where you may have to lay off some of those people who got raises. The second suggestion is that Mr. Bokes, Linda Barth, Kathy Davis can give back their raises. There are CEOs of major corporations that are giving back bonuses because we're in dire times. I'd like to see Mr. Bokes join in the fun. I think you can return for refund the 16 fully adult 30-foot royal palms that you planted in front of the new police building at a cost of probably $15,000 to $20,000 apiece. I don't get it. I think that Mr. Bokes, or whoever succeeds him next week, could institute an immediate fundraising campaign. There's never been any effective outreach by this department. I should be able to walk into any grocery store in this city and see a poster that says, "L.A. Animal Services Needs Your Help." We have these dogs. We have these cats. We have these rabbits, iguanas, whatever we have. We have volunteers that would do that. I have volunteered to do that. Mr. Bokes has been here for three years and has accomplished nothing but wasting my time, this council's time, the city's time. Money. Retaliation has been his favorite game. It really needs to stop. And if this is the excuse the mayor needs, he should take it up. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd.
Right. Yeah, thank you. Yes, see, this is not the first time we've seen this. And I've seen exactly the same thing happen to Venice. This is the city of Los Angeles trying to run another one of these programs. And obviously, the staff and the people running this program are not competent, just like we seen at the beach, which resulted in a stabbing just the other day over one of these permit spaces because the city isn't capable. And here's what I'm going to talk about. Item four in this motion. You're going to instruct the general manager. See, that's what you did with us. They instructed all these groups to do things, and they don't do it. You think they're doing it, but they don't. And here's this one here, right? Consult with the advisory committee members and make sure the spay and neuter voucher program is made available to the low-income residents. And effective strategies are in place for outreach. I mean, that's a joke. Effective strategies from the city of Los Angeles, who just lost $7 billion?
The microphone. Mr. Dowd, you knocked the top off the microphone. If you'll please put that back. Appreciate it. You knocked it off. It's on the floor. Thank you very much. It helps the sound in the chambers. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Alakon's up. But Mr. Cardenas, you called this matter. Would you like to go first? And then, Mr. Alakon, then then Mr. Cardenas, and then me and everybody else. There you go.
Thank you. The representatives from the department could please come forward and ask some questions. Good afternoon. Can you please explain to the council how the decision was made to cut the spay and neuter voucher programs, both the $70 and $30 program that was cut earlier this month in December?
Certainly. Okay. The decision was made basically because it had come to our attention that the program was costing more than the funding we had allocated for it.
Okay. Do you need to get the microphone a little closer? You said the funding, there was an allocated amount of funding and the program was costing more than was what was allocated?
That is correct. The voucher program, we were seeing and experiencing an escalation in the number of coupons that were being redeemed, especially since the implementation of the spay neuter ordinance.
Okay. Now, the spay and neuter voucher program, what is the purpose of that? What is the goal of having a spay and neuter voucher program here in the city of Los Angeles?
Ideally, the goal would be to assist people to get their animals spayed and neutered who could not afford it any other way. However, that's not the way the program had been structured or had been implemented.
Well, then, you better explain what you mean by however.
Certainly. Thank you. As one of the commentators said earlier, there's basically two programs in our spay neuter program. There are two different outreaches. One provides a $70 voucher for people who fall below the poverty line, who really need the help. The other program is a $30 coupon to any pet owner in the city of Los Angeles who requests it. And that appears to have been the driver that was escalating the demand.
Now, Mr. Bokes, you just described the two purposes of the $70 and the $30, but I have a fundamental question. Are you, do you feel, or are you saying that there was something inefficient, or wrong, or ineffective about the $30 program?
Since the time of the controller's audit, a lot had come to our attention with respect to this program. And we have been working very, very diligently in trying to address some of the fundamental issues with this program. This is a program that has been in operation since 1991 and had built into it, and the C.A.O.'s office could perhaps explain this better than I can, but a sort of a below-the-radar-screen-structured deficit that kept rolling over, a deficit from year to year.
Okay.
And as we tried to really get our heads around managing this program effectively, that's when we began to realize that, and especially with the escalating redemption rate, that we needed to get a better handle on it and quickly.
Okay. But wait a minute. I'm thinking of two different things. You just described something where there's some fundamental responsibilities of the department to manage the program. I'll be more specific. Is, do you suspect that there's some kind of fraud going on? We're letting out vouchers and people are turning them in without spay or neutering animals, or something like that? Is that a problem?
I think there should be cause for concern of that, yes.
So, you have some evidence of that?
The problem is, is that there is no control. And there is nothing to prevent and there is nothing to catch fraud. That is the concern. So, until, I believe, and I contend, that until we can develop a program where we can responsibly manage these funds, we shouldn't be giving them out irresponsibly.
Okay. Now, help me understand this. At the rate at which animals are being spayed and neutered in the city of Los Angeles, if that were to reduce in any way, if it were to slow down the spay and neutering of animals in the city of Los Angeles, would that create a bigger burden on your department? In other ways?
Yes. But I think the predicate has to be challenged. I think the question here is, does the $30 discount coupon result in animals being spayed or neutered that wouldn't have been spayed or neutered anyway? And I am not convinced that the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're spending every year on the $30 coupon results in animals getting spayed or neutered that wouldn't have been spayed or neutered anyway.
Okay. And but if you're wrong, just on one cat or one dog that's not spayed or neutered, how many times a year do they go in heat, basically?
Well...
At least once?
In the southwest.
Twice?
Cats can go into heat up to three times a year.
Up to three times a year. And what's the average litter of live kittens in this case?
It depends.
My understanding, the average is four to six.
Okay.
Okay. So, even if two out of every four end up back into your shelter just from one cat that didn't get spayed or neutered, I mean, we're talking about ballooning your responsibilities tremendously.
Understood. Understood. And please, council members, understand, nobody is arguing the value of a spay and neuter program.
But when you cancel it outright, when you cancel it outright, that's making a statement. It's making a lot of statements. But one simple statement is, this is not going to happen for the coming months.
Yeah. I, that point was forcefully made on Monday in front of the Public Safety Committee. And I fully acknowledge my responsibility and perhaps not, or in not addressing the issue more appropriately by bringing in all the stakeholders and explaining. I take full responsibility for that. However, I'm hoping that this morning we can get past, I accept the blame. Now, can we move to the problem solving? We recognize the need. How are we going to pay for it?
Well, first thing I'd like to clarify, if you think that I'm blaming you for something in the questions that I'm asking you, please say so. I'm trying to get to the problem solving here. I'm trying to understand the policy decision that was made internally within your department. Because a policy decision was made on behalf of the city council with your department because we give you your annual budget. So, my next question to you is this. Isn't it custom and practice for all departments within the city and in government in general, and even in the private industry, that when you run short on a particular category that is a high priority of your company or your department, don't you start looking around your entire organization and see if, in fact, you can appropriately and legally look for savings in other areas and then go through the appropriate process to then legally move that money from one place to another? Isn't that a common practice?
That was our practice. That is what we did.
We did that in this case.
We scrubbed our budget numbers, working with the C.A.O.'s office, very carefully, multitudes of times, to recover the deficit level that we were faced with. At the same time we were scrubbing, the numbers kept increasing. The information, the intelligence that we were getting with respect to the program continued to increase, causing greater and greater alarm. Earlier, I passed out a package to each of the council members. And I think it might be helpful if we could allow A.G.M. Barth to walk us through those numbers that led us to make the decision that you're asking.
Before Linda does that, I'm more than happy to hear from anybody from the department. Cal, clarify things. But before we hear from Linda, answer this question, please. Do you have any management vacancies within your department right now?
No.
You don't have any management, any assistant manager vacancies?
Yes, we have two.
Or maybe, Linda?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter to me, excuse me. It doesn't matter to me who answered the question. I just want the right answer.
Yes.
Do you have the answer?
Yes. We have two DFO positions.
I'm sorry, what?
We have two Director of Field Operations positions that have been filled with captains' positions so that we didn't have to lay them off.
Okay. Can you clarify that, Linda?
Yes.
Can you explain it a little bit more plain English as to what's going on with the vacant positions or not?
Yes, sir. We have two Director of Field Operations positions. We have people in acting authority right now in those positions, making a 5% pay. But those positions are not filled. And we also have four District Supervisor positions. They are also not filled.
Okay. Now, based on your scrubbing of the department and the numbers, or the term that you used, Linda, what, can you help answer this question? Are there any vacant positions that haven't been accounted for in that scrubbing of the figures that were turned into the council, like here, and the other information based on what the deficits were going to be in this program?
No, sir. All of the positions that are vacant have a body in them in sub-authority to avoid any layoffs in the department in the current fiscal year. So, although the persons who are in them in a substitute authority or acting position aren't making as much money as the line item on the budget, because we have about 18 positions which don't have any funding at all, our hearing program, for example, and some of these other positions, they're sitting in either unfunded authorities or as substitute authorities. And the net, of course, got us to that approximate $300,000 shortage in the salary account. So, there's a body attached to all of the positions, or we have bodies for which there's no funding, resolution authorities with no funding, that all comes out in the wash to be an overall shortfall. But that's what we were trying to make up.
Okay. But understand, the motion that's before us, that the council will have an opportunity to vote on, is the fact of the matter is that on a later date, you will come back to the council and then answer these questions again, and whatever additional questions the council might have to send you away with so you can report back to the council. Now, when it comes to the running of the department, are you conveying to this council body that if you had not stopped the spay and neuter voucher program in earlier, I think it was March 10th, was your announcement that it was going to stop, what would have happened to the department if you had not stopped it for another week, or two, or three, or four?
It appears from the calculations and the little charts that I gave that we would have had an unfunded liability of about $250,000, approximately, depending on, the redemption of the coupons had continued to increase or escalate as we were seeing the first couple of months of the year. It could have been higher. But looking at the balance sheets as best as we can get them out of F.M.I.S. system, it appears that we'd have that liability. In addition to the fact that we still had a liability we couldn't cover from our own expense budgets and so forth, for about $100,000 in the salaries general account.
What was the rolling forward projected weekly and/or monthly potential deficit? Is that 250 through the end of the year?
Yes, through the end of the year.
So, but I'm getting, back to my point. You made a decision on March 10th. You didn't do a very good job of communicating with either the community that you're partnering with on this matter. And then, you didn't do a very good job of communicating with people in the building who are policymakers on this matter. So, you made a decision that you had the authority to make. Obviously, you found out that it's something that people were very upset about, and rightfully so, in my opinion. But at what rate were you running a deficit on a weekly or monthly basis? Break it down a little bit closer for us than the 250 by the end of June.
One of the complications we have are these various funds that we use to try to keep track of all of these various expenditures. It's what we're going to be working with the controller based on their recommendation. We consolidate these funds. We close out books every year. One of the struggles that we have, the controller pointed out, is that F.M.I.S. and the internal record keeping do not match. That's why we are working so hard to try to resolve these funds. But the best that we could figure out is that we were overspending a good $10,000 or $15,000 a week.
Okay. Mr. Bokes, is this the time of the year that more pregnancies happen with unspayed and neutered cats and dogs?
Yes.
So, this is the time of the year. So, you chose to make this decision right in the middle of the time of year that we are trying to be most effective, or preventative, when it comes to overpopulation of animals?
I think it's important to understand, we have thousands of coupons that are already out that we said that we would continue to redeem. This was a temporary suspension until we get a handle on it. We very quickly reinstated the $70 coupon program. And we are looking for ways, working with the Spay and Neuter Commission or Committee and others, on seeing if we can expand that, but as funding allows.
So, Mr. Bokes, what happens if we, if the city of Los Angeles, whoever makes a decision, if a mistake is made and the calculation is wrong, and then we start having more and more pregnancies, and then you have a fraction of those, whatever be a fraction of 10%, 20%, or 60%, 70% of those, those animals that just were born, end up needing your department services? What do you do? What is likely to happen if you have an influx? What happens to those animals?
I think we all know what would happen, is that there could be, over time, an increase in the number of unwanted animals ending up in our shelters. We don't want that. We want a spay and neuter program that's well-funded going forward.
Okay. Mr. Bokes, thank you for answering a different question, but I answered a specific question. What happens to the animals if we have a sudden influx of animals coming to your doorstep in your department and they're unwanted? What happens to those animals?
Well, I'm not sure how you're defining unwanted. It's something of a speculative question. We adopt out a lot of animals. We have certainly seen...
And how many so far, for example, last year, were unable to be adopted out for whatever reason? How many animals are euthanized officially by your department? Round figure to the nearest thousand?
About 17,000.
About 17,000 animals. So, if we have an influx and we can't get them adopted out, we're already having a problem adopting about 15,000 to 17,000 a year on a normal basis with the voucher program in place. And then, if we miscalculate, if there's a miscalculation, then we're going to be euthanizing more animals than we did last year. And what is the cost for euthanization of animals?
And thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
My last question. Round figures, please.
For an animal that we hold, the typical period of time that we euthanize, about $375 for a dog, and $380 for a cat.
Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, therein lies the problem. The problem is penny-wise and dollar-fullish at the worst time of the year.
Mr. Alakon is our next speaker. After that, will be Mr. Zine, and then Mr. Weiss, each for the first time. Mr. Alakon. Mr. Alakon.
And we, we introduced the most aggressive spay and neuter ordinance in the country a little more than a year ago, and I think all the people that were standing in the room at the time that it was announced talked about their desire and the goal of the city to make this a no-kill city. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So you heard the mayor say he wants to make this a no-kill city, and you heard the council say they want to make this a no-kill city. Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
So you would then understand, I would think, that it would be the policy of the city of Los Angeles to do everything we can to make this a no-kill city, correct?
Agreed.
When you eliminated this program, were we moving forward or backward in terms of making this a no-kill city?
The program was never eliminated.
What happened to it?
The, we...
It was suspended?
We ended the funding of the Sam Simon Foundation ban, but we continued the funding of the Amanda Foundation ban.
When you cut the program, did it move the policy of no-kill forward or backward?
Again, I...
No, you can say you don't know, I mean...
I honestly don't know. I think we're missing the funding.
I think I'll decide what questions are pertinent or not. Please don't go there.
I'm sorry?
Please do not go there with my time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
$30 coupons in 2007 and 2008 were responsible for 13,000 surgeries. Is that not correct?
Yes.
The total amount of surgeries that were performed by all the contributing parties was 27,916 in that year, correct?
Yes.
The $30 coupons were therefore responsible for about 45% of all the surgeries. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And that's the program you want to cut?
I don't want to cut it. I want to be able to pay for it.
But you're proposing to eliminate the $30 voucher program.
I didn't want to. I don't want to. I just want to be able to pay for it.
Either it is, or it isn't. Is it your proposal to cut the $30 voucher program?
Until we have the funding for it, yes.
So that's a yes. I take that as a yes.
I think that's the responsible decision, until we have the funding to pay for it.
Now, you also...
It's not my choice.
You also intimated that there was some fraud going on out there?
No, I said that there's no way of knowing.
Well, then why bring it up? Why did you, it seems as if you're trying to find another reason to justify your action. So is it or isn't? Is there some fraud going on out there or not?
I did not bring it up. I was asked if there was a possibility.
And you said yes!
And I said, "There's no way of knowing. There's no mechanism. There's no controls."
The question was, why did you make the decision to cut? You intimated that there was some fraud going on out there.
No.
You want to read the tape? You want to see the tape again?
I would like to see the tape again, and if I did, that's not...
Okay, so then you're telling me there's no fraud going on there.
The answer was, there wasn't enough funding to fund the program.
No, no, no. The question was, why did you make the decision to cut? You said that there were some other things going on that may have impacted the program negatively, that we decided it wasn't in our interest to continue the program. And Mr. Cardenas asked, are you suggesting there's some kind of fraud going on out there, and you said yes?
What I recall saying is that we have no controls, no mechanisms, to know.
Okay, so you have a program that has no controls on it? Is that what you're saying?
The city has had that program in place since 1991.
You, Mr. Boakes, you run the department.
I'm trying to fix it.
Trying to fix it? We've been doing this program for years, and you do not have controls on when you hand a voucher out? You don't know whether or not a spay or neuter happens?
Those controls have never been in place, that is correct.
So how do I know that that 13,000 figure is accurate?
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
My question, exactly.
And yet, we did an ordinance, we did a whole faldorol about creating this spay and neuter thing, we're going to save dogs, we're going to save cats, we're going to save children, we're going to go out there and do this program, and now you're telling me that the numbers are bogus?
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Last question.
I'd like an answer to my question.
I'm telling, the answer is, we would like to know what the real numbers are. We're working very hard to make sure that we can develop a program that's fully transparent to the council and to the public.
Mr. Zine is our next speaker. After that is Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Boakes, I will be very candid. I have absolutely no confidence in your honesty, your ability to run a department. And I think you heard that in Public Safety Committee Monday.
I did.
Fifteen council members. We don't agree on many things. Many of us agree on this particular situation. Your operation of this department, and I will start my conversation with you by saying retaliation. As the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I want to make sure you're aware that if you retaliate against any of your employees that bring matters to my attention or any other attention of the members of this council, you will be held accountable for retaliating. And I have a box, Mr. Boakes, a box. If I can please have the box. This box contains information from your employees. This box is full to the top. These are emails and documents that I received from your employees and from people who love animals on how bad this program is and other programs you're responsible for. This box is full to the top, Mr. Boakes. We manage many programs in this city. Police Department, Fire Department. I don't have even a file that I can put paper in on any other department other than yours. You are held responsible. The program, the spay and neuter program, did you ask the Commissioners of Animal Services before you decided to suspend the program? Hold my time, hold my time.
The Commissioners received a report the day before. On that particular day, it had not become clear to us how grave we ultimately thought the situation was, but it was reported to them in a written report and in my General Manager Report that some action was likely to be needed.
So you made the decision to eliminate the program effective immediately and to call all the vouchers back, $30 and $70, and eliminate, not temporarily, because temporary wasn't there until after the heat was turned on, it was to eliminate the program until the end of the fiscal year. Now, you're nodding, you're shaking your head no, and I've got documents to show just the opposite, Mr. Boakes.
There was never any intention to permanently cancel this program.
But it wasn't decided to be permanent when it was first announced. It was the program's going to end this particular day, March 11th, March 13th, March something. I've got the documents, Mr. Boakes.
The message has always, has been consistent, I believe from the beginning, that the concern was that the demand was exceeding the funding.
Now, when you look at the cost, as been discussed by two of my colleagues, the cost of killing an animal versus the cost of a spay and neuter program, cost benefits spay and neuter, would you admit to that?
Absolutely.
And if your department was having a problem with funding, why wouldn't you go to the committee that we've established to review that program in accordance with the ordinance on the spay and neuter, or consult your Commissioners before making that decision to cut this particular program at this particular time of the year? Hold my time while he thinks, please.
I agree that the Commission and the Spay and Neuter Committee should be involved in these types of decisions, and to the best of our ability, we informed them the day before the decision was made. It wasn't until the following day, and that I made the decision based on new intelligence that was coming forward, that the program was far surpassing its funding.
What record-keeping do you maintain on the vouchers, the $30 and $70 vouchers? What record-keeping is maintained on those to know how many you have out there? For example, if I call Chief Bratton and say, "Chief, how many officers do you have in the department? How many are deployed right now? And how many have guns?" He'll be able to tell me that. If I ask Chief Berry, "How many fire trucks are out there?", he'll be able to tell me that. How many vouchers? How many are out there? What's the liability? Or do we just give them out like, "Come and help yourself, folks"?
Uh...
No, I'm asking you, Mr. Boakes. You're the General Manager of the department. Don't turn to someone else. You're held accountable and responsible. Under the Charter of the City of Los Angeles, you are held accountable and responsible. Don't look to other people.
Let me explain.
You answered the question, sir.
Mr. Zine, that'll be your last question, and Mr. Weiss will follow. Please answer the question.
Yes, sir. The coupons are distributed well beyond the capacity of the city to fund. It's very much like booking airline tickets, where airlines will overbook. And over the past 15 years, the city has consistently given out, without any controls, $30 gift certificate, or coupons, spay and neuter coupons, to anybody who had asked for them. And the rate of redemption dramatically and alarmingly began to increase at the time that the spay and neuter ordinance went into effect.
Thank you. I'll have more questions.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think this is a very important issue. Frankly, I think it's too important to reduce it, to make it personal, because this issue is just critical to this city, and I think at a time when we have an economic downturn, when we have a recession, it's more important than ever that we provide these vouchers to people. It's truly the mark of whether we are a civilized and humane city, that we not allow ourselves to get in a position where unwanted dogs and cats are roaming our streets, which is what could happen quite easily if the decision that you made was allowed to stand. So I want to just say how particularly proud I am of Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alakon, that you immediately jumped in to make sure that this decision would not stand, and that you have been so forceful and so effective in ensuring that this poor decision was rolled back and rolled back immediately. And I really hope we never have a hearing like this, or a hearing like we had on Monday in Public Safety again, and I think Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alakon will ensure that we never happen, that we never have it again. And I hope that not just you, but that the department, from this point on, whoever is in charge of this department, whoever works there, understands that this is something that just cannot be touched. Because it, you know, mark my words, if LA were to go in a different direction, it would really mark this city in a terrible, terrible way. It would send a terrible message about Los Angeles. The people of this city want their dogs and cats to be treated humanely, and we, the specter that you would have unleashed had this decision been allowed to stand, would have been a terrible, terrible blow to this city. Hat is off to Mr. Alakon and Mr. Cardenas for ensuring that that does not happen.
Ms. Groo.
Thank you. And I think you're hearing from all of us, a couple of issues. One is, and I think the primary is, we weren't told. I mean, this is not a unique experience, and I think that's why you hear the frustration from us. We have a lot of programs we've cut in the city, a lot, that we have come forward and we've made that decision as a body. And the public, thank you. And that's where we find out, by reading the paper or finding out after the fact. Because there have been instances, for example, in the Budget Committee, where the first thing the Department of Transportation wanted to cut was our crossing guards. And we said, "We're not cutting the crossing guards. That's our last resort in what we're doing to take care of our kids." And I think what you're hearing today is the same thing, is we want to know in making those decisions, because we are ultimately responsible to the public. And that's what you hear today, is the concern that decisions are being made without the Commission's input or without the city council's input. And, you know, as great as it is having discussions with the CAO and CLA, they don't speak for us, and they don't speak for the people. And this is a program, and the timing of it, without knowledge, caught everyone off-guard. And I think that is unfortunate for many of us. The second point, and just an amendment on this, Mr. Zine, in the motion, it instructs the Controller to perform another audit. I spoke to the Controller yesterday, and there's an audit that hasn't been heard by the council yet. And so what I would like to do, if it is okay with the makers of the motion, and I signed the second, the motion, is to just work with the Controller to, and the AGE, we talked to Mr. Wee Star's office, that after that audit has been reviewed, to have a further discussion as to the appropriateness or the timing of that. So if that's okay with my, I think, Mr. Cardenas, you were the maker of that motion, if that's okay. I spoke to Laura Chick yesterday, and the 2008 audit hasn't been heard by this council yet. So we should hear that audit first, and then be able to determine what next steps may potentially be, because we haven't even heard the first audit that was done, that 2008 audit, and to look at that direction, where she's coming from in that particular audit. Because it instructs the Controller to perform an audit, and actually, we can't instruct them to perform an audit, we can ask them, or we can say, but I think we'd like to see what that 2008 audit first is heard by the city council.
Your amendment is to put the language with the 2008 audit. Mr. Cardenas, you want to put down the record?
Yes, what I would put in there, said on item number, further move that the city council instruct the Controller to perform a follow-up audit of the 2008 voucher program, is that we ask the city council to, ask the city Controller and the AGE to hear that item, and see if there's a need based on that audit, since we haven't heard it yet, to look at whether or not it's appropriate to do that next time. Okay? Thank you. So I think, you know, I just want to go back to, this is a very important program for the city of Los Angeles, and it has ramifications. We should not be the last to know.
Understood. Thank you, Ms. Groo. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for highlighting a couple of things on this issue. I wanted to go back a little bit further, and I don't know if the CAO who worked on this way back in the budget will recall, but maybe you do, from, I think it was 2003 or 2004, when I served on the Budget and Finance Committee, very proud, and I worked very closely with the humane community and others, to actually dedicate new sources of funding for this program. It was at a much lesser level, and there was a permitting for our animals that was going to be increased, a permit fee, and that increase was going to be put solely in the general fund for the good of the entire city. And I made the motion, and it successfully passed, and we put it in, that this be dedicated money for spay and neuter vouchers. As such, we didn't put a formal, to quote our former president, or vice president, excuse me, almost president Al Gore, a lockbox around it, but the idea was to have a dedicated source of funding that would be for something that would be there. And I think what was troubling about it, and I understand when budget times are tough, quite often, General Managers will point out the thing that will get the most reaction, and you certainly have gotten a reaction around here on this program, as a way of perhaps getting some attention or dollars back to a department. I understand that, that's not uncommon around here. But I think what's important for all of us to discuss is how do we continue to dedicate to make sure that that money essentially is almost a special fund, so that it can't be. So when you run into budget problems, or anybody else who's running the department runs into budget problems, you have to cut from other places. Not because it's your choice, but because that's been the priority of the council. Now, I believe that already was that priority, and that our actions, when we did that in the Budget Committee, when I made that motion, I think it was with Ms. Hahn, if I'm not mistaken, we then had, I think at that point, we tripled the amount of money we had for low-income spay and neuter vouchers. And we get a system in place. I mean, I'm not here to advise you how to run the department, the executive branch runs through the mayor here, but I do believe that, long-term, the only way we're going to be able to do this is by having a good canvassing program that pays for itself in new permits, and a proportion of that money goes back into spay and neutering vouchers. And it will be a risk stepping forward to do that at some point, but if we don't do that, then we're going to be in this position of saying, we have no resources, we have nobody in place, we don't have any funding for the vouchers, because we don't have anybody enforcing the permitting. And that's also, if we do the canvassing, where we get the mandatory checks on the spay and neutering, which Mr. Alakon's law moved forward, which his council and the mayor passed and signed respectively. And it's nice to have these laws on the books, but if we don't actually have something that protects the funding that we put in place four or five years ago, and if we don't have the canvassing program that will pay for itself if we do it the right way, in place to actually confirm that people are spaying, neutering their animals, we can pat ourselves on the back for being a progressive humane city that's still putting a lot of animals to death. And so, you know, I'm not here to scream and shout today, but I am here to point out that history, because to me, that was something that was pretty sacrosanct, that was not supposed to be ever moved away. That's what happens in government, though, if we don't have the institutional memory, is that something that was dedicated for a certain purpose over time, in bad budget times, we just kind of slip and start putting that into our general fund needs. That's not what this is. We need the oversight to make sure that it continues, and I for one will continue to guard that money, just like I did when I got it there, to make sure that we have that. And I think all of us can agree on one thing, too, that even if we have it all back in place, it doesn't begin to give enough of the low-income residents... place, it doesn't begin to give enough of the low-income residents in this city, especially with the downturn in the economy, what they need to do to spay and neuter their animals as well. And so I put that out there because whatever we need to do to, after we get this back in, I want to construct those walls up again so this can't be touched.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Mr. Boakes, now, I want to ask you some questions about your basic awareness of some of the things that go on out there and who uses these vouchers. For example, I think that the public thinks that these vouchers are for, you know, the person who lives at this address, who shows up to your department and says, I want to spay and neuter my animal, and they're explained, well, you can get a voucher if you're low-income for $70, if you're not, you can get a $30 voucher, you can get it done here, you can get it done somewhere else, et cetera. But the fact of the matter is, quite a bit of these vouchers are being utilized by organizations who appear to me to be very efficient, very orderly, and are really trying to attack the problem of spay and neutering in the City of Los Angeles. What percentage of those vouchers are going to those programs?
To our rescue groups. We use a large number of our rescue groups to help distribute the spay and neuter vouchers. The exact percentage? You know?
I don't know.
I just want right answers, doesn't matter to me who says it.
They're distributed through our spay and neuter coordinator, so I don't have the exact number, but I know, I do know we rely on our rescue groups to help distribute.
Now, one of the questions I have is, I'm looking at a letter from you. It says, "March 9, 2009, Board of Animal Services Commissioners," that's which two, "from Edward A. Boakes, General Manager," and it says, "Update on Spay/Neuter Programs in Clinics." And basically, when it refers to the potential or the possibilities of having to cut back or what have you, the closest you get to describing your potential actions are, is one of the bullet points, it says, "Slightly reduced coupon distribution." But on the 10th of March, you basically said, we're stopping, that right now, we're stopping to give out $70 and $30 vouchers in the City of Los Angeles through your department.
That's correct.
Okay. So what happened between March 9th and March 10th, when you reported to the Commission that you, it says right here, slightly reduced coupon distribution? Big difference, you slightly reduce and just stopping it altogether?
I was advised by my fiscal team that the redemption rate of the coupons that had been distributed were wildly beyond any projections that the department had made up until the date of that memo. And that if some immediate action wasn't taken, we could, at that time, we were foreseeing in the neighborhood of a $400,000 or a $500,000 deficit.
But, but the thing is, the thing that strikes me as the most odd here is that that's how you described to the Commission, slightly reduced coupon distribution, and then you tell me that you got a report internally that said, hey, you know, got to stop the bleeding, or whatever it is that they told you. Did they tell you closer to March 8th, they told you on the evening of March 9th, they told you in February, and you were mulling it over, trying to figure out? What happened here?
It was March 11th, when I got the critical news of how bad it was.
So what was the day that you announced that you were going to stop giving out vouchers?
Well, it would have been the same day, or the next day. So I may have the dates wrong, but it was...
Because I thought it was March 10th.
It was March 10th, when we let it out. Is that a Monday?
Not sure.
Yeah. But it's all in that, my meeting with the Commission was on a Monday, I believe the decision was made on a Tuesday.
Yeah, March 10th is a Tuesday.
Yes, it was Tuesday. So it was March 10th.
Okay. So you got a briefing the day after the Commission?
Correct.
All right. Well, my advice to you and any general manager, if you're going to be going before a Commission, I would be asking my team to please give me any critical information before I report the day before, or the week before, the Commission meeting. Because they're the oversight body, directly, and we're an oversight body as well. But to get critical information the day after and then make a critical decision like that, again, I think we're getting down to the bottom of what contributed to the outrage and the volume of an outcry on this situation. Mr. Boakes, I need to ask you a question regarding no-kill. When you were hired, you made it very clear to all of us who hired you, to entrusted you to run this department, that creating a no-kill city, a no-kill environment, is something that we were working strongly and making great, going to try to make great strides to achieve.
That is correct. I'm very committed to that.
You're very committed to that. So are you willing to say that it's one of the high priorities that you have for the department that you run?
It's the highest priority that I have.
It's the highest priority. So basically, if it's the highest priority, and you were willing to slow down, halt, or whatever somebody wants to describe, basically, on the voucher program, which is a contributing factor, correct, to reducing the number of animals that end up being unwanted or unfortunately have to be euthanized? You stopped that program.
I understand.
But it's your highest priority. See the, how incongruent that is?
It is a very difficult balance to try to manage in a fiscally responsible way and achieve all of our goals. And this was a temporary suspension to allow us to regroup so that we could more effectively use the limited funding we had. That was our thinking.
Well, Mr. Boakes, the fact that you're willing to admit that it is your highest priority, I appreciate you saying that, but I think it's inconsistent to say that and at the same time, look at your entire budget and say, I couldn't do anything with it, so I had to stop one of the major contributors to us effectuating one of your highest priorities. And it happens to be one of our highest priorities for your department as well.
The, may I ask?
Yeah.
The only, the only alternative we had to that was laying staff off. And if you recall, it was just a few months ago, where I got equally strong admonition from the City Council that that was not acceptable. So, so those were the...
I must admit that, meaning...
With 31 employees that would have been laid off if it hadn't been for a motion you made.
Mr. Boakes, there's a big difference between laying off 31 employees or having to make a decision to do something with one or two positions or what have you, to get you through the coming weeks or months or what have you. And that's, that gets to the core of what my earlier question was. You got a bleed rate of 250,000 for your budget through now and the end of the year, when you made that decision. But what was the bleed rate on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis, in the most critical time of the year, where we need to constantly encourage people to, please, spay and neuter your animals? They're getting at each other right now more than any other time of the year. This is the time of the year that we need these animals to be spayed and neutered, and we need human beings to carry them over to get them spayed and neutered. Now, I don't know if you've ever seen it, but I've never seen a dog or a cat walk into a facility and say, hey, cut me up, take care of me. It's human beings that have to do that. And when you did that, you sent the message, and it reverberated through the press to everybody who cares or doesn't care about this issue, that the spay and neuter voucher program is gone. Now, you clarified that it wasn't gone because there are vouchers still out there, but when you said, no more, we're not going to give any more out, the average Joe or Jane in the community thought, that's it, no more vouchers. So the dynamic in the community is, well, I guess they're not committed, and, you know. Then we go in the wrong direction. We go away from being a no-kill, and we end up, you know, euthanizing more than 17,000 this next year, instead of 17,000. So one of the things that I want to make very, very clear for you and any general manager for the City of Los Angeles, when you have a problem like this, go to a council member and/or the mayor, or anybody you want, who has some semblance of authority and responsibility over these kinds of decisions, and say, hey, I got a big problem here, and maybe we can help you figure out how to do it. Instead of just dropping it on us and the public on a moment's notice, and then this is what you get. And I do believe that you could have done better. I do believe that we don't have to be standing here debating this like this.
Mr. Cardenas? Thank you. Mr. Wesson?
Getting at each other? Anyway, I move the previous question.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We have additional speakers on the Q. We'll take a vote on this. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
That's okay. So the matter has been amended by Ms. Gruel. And Mr. Kirk, can you do a clarification?
Mr. President, that did fail, so the debate goes on.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was one no. Oh, I was voting to continue the discussion. Yes, Mr. Alarcon, you're up.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Cardenas?
Um, I'll...
On Mr. Alarcon's time? Or clarification? Mr. Alarcon, you're up.
Please, second. Go ahead, thank you. Mr. Alarcon's time, with his permission. It says to report back to the City Council on Tuesday, March 31st. Could we do it on April, amend that instead of March 31st, Tuesday to Friday, April 3rd? Yeah, that'd be in the ballot, yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, the amendment, hopefully, I'm 15 seconds of his time, was, the last words in this motion are Tuesday, March 31st, if we can change that to Friday, April 3rd.
Very well.
Thank you.
That'll be the directive. Mr. Alarcon, on, Mr. Cardenas' time. We're sharing time now.
Councilmembers, this, this is truly not an issue about spay and neuter at all. This is a question about our general manager and the confidence that we have in our general manager. We can say whatever we want about the spay and neuter program, but clearly, we need to investigate. I wonder how much time we have spent on issues related to this department that were unnecessarily created because of some, some action by the general manager that was not consulted with, did not talk to the Commission, the advisory groups, the mayor, the Council. And I think that's really what we're talking about today. So the question is, what is the next poodle-neuter issue? What is the next pit bull academy issue? What is the next Mission Hills Animal Shelter is not going to open issue? What is the next Harbor is not going to open issue? Clinical is waiting to do spay and neuter. Folks, the issue is whether or not we have confidence in this general manager, not, and I do not. Mr. Box, you continue to throw your ideas around without consultation, and it's damaging to our city, it's damaging to our communities. I believe it is time for us to move on. And that is the real discussion that we are having today. So I am moving an amendment to send a letter of a vote of no confidence in this general manager to the mayor of Los Angeles. I ask for a second.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just for the record, the item number 19 before council right now is regarding the voucher program. So I think for, we've had legal advice that that would be best brought in with a separate motion, as opposed to something that was, if one were to do that, as opposed to amending something which is about spay and neutering by the Brown Act.
I have, I have an amendment that has been seconded. Was it out of order? If it's out of order, I appreciate that.
I believe it's not within the subject matter of this matter.
How this was agendized, but you...
Agendized.
How is that?
What's before council is the spay and neuter voucher program, and it's appropriate to discuss the general manager's performance as related to this program. However, the no-confidence motion should be packaged as another motion separate from this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zine?
Okay, thank you.
That is withdrawn, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor the point. I think the message has been delivered very, very clear to Mr. Boakes. As I understand, the program for the $70 will be reinstated as of when?
It was reinstated this last Wednesday.
Okay, the $70 program is reinstated, and there's verification that the people qualify for the very low-income category.
That's correct, that's the case.
Okay. And any other programs regarding spay and neuter, Mr. Geis and some other folks may want to participate in that through the volunteer program that they do at no city expense. But as far as our spay and neuter, it will continue for low, very low-income folks throughout the City of Los Angeles with verification.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I then conclude my conversation, hope we can move the matter forward with that.
Okay. That's our last speaker on the Q. As amended, those amendments have been accepted as friendly, so please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. That will conclude this matter. We'll next go to item number 20, please.
And that was called Special for Cards.
Item 20, we have Mr. Arnold Sachs, and he will be followed by Dr. Clyde Williams.
Fixing Angelenos Stuck in Traffic or Fast. Cost of a Dash Bus: $7,100, left for less than one week of service. The congestion pricing plan proffered by MTA seeks a three-minute headway on the 110 and El Monte busway. Commuter Express is a service covering rush hour lasting approximately two hours, with headways of seven to 15 minutes. Do the math, that's 20 buses versus eight buses. Since I know the council will authorize this funding, I have two questions. Will the fixing of Los Angeles, will the fixing of Angelenos include spay and neutering vouchers? And can the council come up with an additional funding to fix Angelenos residing in traffic or fart?
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde, Dr. Clyde Williams, and after that is Zuma Dog.
Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Just for Councilmember Parks, Uhuru means freedom in Swahili. So Ron Barry even knew more about it, what was going to happen. Okay. I don't know so much, but I have gone through the RAN report, and I know something about traffic. Most of those stuck in traffic in the northeast LA area, and probably the East San Fernando Valley, are not Angelenos specifically, but are from San Maria, no, Monrovia, Santa Clarita. So implementation of the RAN recommendations will facilitate the commuter traffic from these outlying areas, not Angelenos, and will in fact probably impact upon the Angelenos that try to access Huntington Drive, Figueroa, and Valley from Alhambra, against the Alhambra traffic. Please put the fast work scope dates and detailed accounting mentioned in the motion for District Two and any other similar allocations on their respective district websites. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. Mr. Dog here. Here's Matt Dowd here. That will close the public comment on that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 24, call Special for Cards.
Okay, Mr. Sachs, on item number 24.
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sachs. One hour? This should be a program that should be extended to cover every day, that there should be an effort made to shut off lights in hallways, lights that are unnecessary electricity use, anything that would protect and keep to a minimum the amount of unnecessary waste of natural resources. Yesterday, in the MTA board meeting, they authorized $71,000 a month for toner. The amount of toner used for copying documentation, I would imagine, that's a lot of documentation. That's paper that needs to be recycled. This is not a one-hour deal, this is a 24-hour, eight-day-a-week, 370 days a year method, mission that the city should embark on. Timing for lights might be initiative that would be looked at for, for public areas and buildings where there's a timer used, even for museums that where the public visits, anything that can be done to eliminate wasteful use, not just for one hour. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker that is here. Mr. Dog and Mr. Dowd seem to have left, so please close the public hearing and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one, and the City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, did we already do 28? No, that's a special meeting, okay. Special one, please, on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city has learned from the CRA, among others, the facts to finalize the applications for transit-oriented development and infill infrastructure grants. Immediate action is required in order to submit the grant application packages by April 1st. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Anybody on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. Anybody on the substance? Which should be heard. Would you like to fill out a card on this, Mr.? Okay, why don't you come up forward? We'll call forward Mr. Sacks on special one.
I will fill out a card. I'm just concerned, the CRA leading the charge here, one of the most corrupt commissions in the city. Why is the CRA responsible for transit-oriented development? Where is the housing department for the city? Where is the transit agency for the city? Metro has it under their control for their transit-oriented housing. Why is the CRA dipping into and acting as a third-party conduit for city business? We've seen before with the CRA actions, the Grand Avenue project, we just pay, we just authorize payment for CRA legal fees, it's not a city agency. It masquerades as a city agency, but it is not a city agency. It doesn't conform to the financial disclosure parts that you notice on your agendas. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't conform to financial disclosure requirements, how can it be a city agency? Why are you acting, why are you allowing the CRA, again, to act on behalf of the city? Who's going to be responsible for the fallout from their, from their mess-ups? The public. Thank you very much for your time and answers and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. That will close the public hearing on special one. No members wish to be heard? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. If we can go to the special meeting, please.
You wish to recess the regular?
I do wish to.
That would leave item 28, which was called special by Councilmember Alakon, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Okay, let's take public comment first. Of one public comment card, then go ahead. Mr. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. Why is the money going to the Community Development Department? LA Fire Department right now is requiring all of the residents to clean up their fire materials through prevention. This is primarily for mitigation and cleanup restoration? How about the prevention? Because the fire season is coming again. And even with the LA Fire Department's vigorous program, last year and the year before, we had rather large fires in the Los Angeles city area. It'd be better money spent by giving it to the LA Fire Department to prevent fires rather than to the Community Development Department for other activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon?
Mr. President, I didn't anticipate any discussion on this, and I'm sort of glad the question was raised. This is, this is a program that would enable the city to qualify and receive a national emergency grant relative to the Workforce Investment Act to get $766,000 in funds from the state of California Employment Development Department specifically to address the Sayer Fire. It allows us to essentially hire people who were affected by the fire, not necessarily directly fire victims, but people who were affected, so for example, evacuees would qualify, to perform jobs on public land, not on private land, to answer your question, to do things like planting trees, fixing Caltrans areas that might have been destroyed, fixing public areas, parks that might have been destroyed, and whatever other work we can do under the guidelines. So this is a program that will generate about 50 jobs at about $10 to $11 an hour to help in the cleanup, but at the same time provide a small notion of economic stimulus, a large notion of economic stimulus for those folks who get the work. So this is a wonderful opportunity. We want to thank the Employment Development Department for it. The amendment that I have introduced relative to this specifically states that the manager of this will be the Los Angeles Conservation Corps. They have managed these programs in the past for us, and they've done a great job on many other programs, and so they will manage it with the help of El Perico Laredo in the northeast San Fernando Valley.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote. Sure, that was...
Ten ayes.
It was friendly. Yep. That was already circulated. That is approved, and we'll send that forthwith without objection, and recess the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Yeah, Mr. Wesson?
On special item one, if we could move that forthwith.
Without objection, we'll send that forthwith. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I just want to clarify for the record. I don't want people to think that last night, a lot of jokes, a lot of roasting went on or what have you, but one thing I want to clarify, when I say Bernard Parks is my friend, he is my friend. That was not a joke.
Thank you for that tender moment. Any other tender moments or announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, can we do our housekeeping, please?
Council has motions for posting referral.
Let's go ahead and post and refer those.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday, March 31st for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
That'll clear the desk.
All right. There are no announcements? Mr. Parks, did you...
Thomas making changes everywhere.
A lot of hope and change. If I can ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chio Mario Marino. Mario was an Italian restaurateur, and Tom Labonge knows him quite well, too, and we're going to put Tom as the second in this motion, who opened his first eatery in Los Angeles in 1957, and his family has been running restaurants in this town ever since. He died peacefully Wednesday in his home as a result of lung cancer. His first restaurant in Hollywood, many of us have been there, served up classic Napolitano style cuisine, and they were favorites of Hollywood stars like Elizabeth Taylor and John Wayne. Mario spawned a family of restaurateurs, and his sons Mario and Salvatore continue to operate Italian restaurants in Los Angeles, including one I was just having lunch at yesterday, El Greco, which is very close to my field office. Mario is survived by his wife Maria, daughter Rosanna, and sons Mario and Salvatore. Services will be held Saturday at 10 o'clock at Christ the King Church, 624 North Rossmoor. And if you can make the rosary tonight, it will be at 7:30 at the same location of Christ the King Church. May Mario Marino rest in peace.
On this one, yes, Mr. Parks?
Second, one of the things that, I think all of us have been to the restaurant on Melrose, but one of the things in my first introduction was John Foro, that was his favorite restaurant, and he and his wife Margaret would go there and sit in the back room where it was legal to smoke, I think, but it was a great time, and the family was always very, very cordial. In the new restaurant on Santa Monica Boulevard, the son runs that, and it's a great place. In fact, I was just there this weekend, and wondering why the son wasn't there, we found a lady, the father passed away.
Thank you. One more sentence. I had lunch there yesterday with Joe Soral, who of course has been very close to him over the years, and with his son, who was there yesterday especially to be with us, and I told him that we would adjourn the council in memory of his dad today.
Thank you. Mr. Weiser?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And councilmembers, I ask that we adjourn today in honor of Shirley Ann Lucian, who passed away peacefully in Eagle Rock this past Tuesday, March 24th. Shirley was exactly 68 years and three months old when she said her goodbye to her loving friends and family after a life full of love, happiness, and adventure. She was born in a small town in Excelsior Springs, Missouri, on December 24th, 1940, the only child of Homer and Kathleen Hunt. She married Robert Allen Lucian in May 1960, and they moved to Long Beach, California, where Robert was stationed in the Navy. They moved from California to Missouri in the mid-1960s, but Shirley always dreamed of moving back to California one day, especially during the long, freezing Missouri winters. And eventually, she did come back in 2002 to be near her daughter Cheryl and Cheryl's husband David, who put down their own roots to raise a family in Eagle Rock. Shirley was a devoted mother and a champion grandmother who was a staple figure of her grandchildren's dance recitals, swim lessons, school field trips, parent-teacher conferences, and school performances. She was also a tireless friend and companion who would give of herself in any way possible to help others. Many in Eagle Rock knew her from Cheryl's boutique, the Blissful Soul on Eagle Rock Boulevard, where she spent countless hours helping Cheryl grow the business and assisting customers who quickly became friends who would often stop by just to see Shirley. Cheryl says her mother really loved Eagle Rock, her friends and family, the people, the small-town feel, the community spirit, everything except the parking tickets. Shirley was known for her humor, her smile, her spontaneous free spirit, her candor, and her absolute determination to live life her own way. She survived breast cancer in 1992, and she was convinced to the very end that with a strong, positive outlook, she would be healed again. Unfortunately, even her indomitable will could not overcome the illness. She leaves behind her daughter Cheryl and Lisa and their families, including grandchildren Cameron and Chloe, whose lives have been inspired by hers. Since she was never one to mourn in sadness, a celebration will be held this Saturday evening at the 20th Century Women's Club in Eagle Rock on Colorado Boulevard to honor the life and legacy of children Lucian.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. We request your adjournment in memory of Carlos D. Cortez, passed away March 22nd. Mr. Cortez was a native of Canoga Park, resident of 86 years, loving husband, caring father and grandfather, was a fixture at Our Lady of the Valley Church, veteran, relative of Michael Cortez and Sandra Gonzalez, who are very involved in our community, and dedicated members of the Community Redevelopment Association LA family, as well as that of Canoga Park Neighborhood Council. Mr. Cortez will be deeply missed by his family and friends, survived by his wife of 61 years, Elena, five children, Ophelia, Rachel, Mario, Carlos, Ruben, and 14 grandchildren. May he rest in plea peace, Carlos D. Cortez.
Thank you. Any adjourning motions? Mr. Alakon, you had a quick announcement?
Yes. Tia Chuchos Centro Cultural and Bookstore, which had been in Silmar and then moved temporarily to Lake Piteras is returning to Silmar, and they are going to have the grand opening this Saturday, March 28th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is founded by Luis Rodriguez, the author of the novel Always Running, which is a model for, to help us understand the issue of gangs and violence in our communities, and he is the founder of this organization with his wife. They will be providing free entertainment, food, poetry, and more. The theme is renewing community through arts and culture. They're a profitable bookstore, but they also are focused on expanding a cultural understanding and in doing so, providing a future for those who have a better understanding of their culture. They have a coffee shop, workshops, art exhibits, readings, and performances. Tia Chuchos Centro Cultural and Bookstore is 818-528-5, I'm sorry, 818-528-4511.
Thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? This meeting in the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next be in session on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. We look forward to seeing you then. I'll be here in the John Foro council chambers. Have a great weekend.